And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the open public meeting, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Towns Board of Adjustment has been published.
Has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Costanzo is absent. Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. Camello?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Najarian?
Here.
Mr. Book?
Here. Thank you. Do we have any resolutions for approval this evening?
Yes. Okay. First is Resolution 2021-20, Rojas, Block 11402, Lot 6, 240 Sunny Brook Road, granting a variance for solar panels in the front yard area. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Have a motion in a second to approve, please.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Roll call.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-21, Walker, Block 801, Lot 48, 635 Jackson Mills Road, granting approval of variances to permit an in-ground swimming pool. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-22, Sturgis, Block 2301, Lot 25, 100 East Commodore Boulevard, granting approval of variance to permit an in-ground swimming pool, fence, and shed. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Have a motion in a second to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-23, Mayor, Block 11407, Lot 2, 300 Cherry Street, granting approval of variances to construct a carport. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Have a motion in a second to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-24, Hanson, Block 10105, Lot 6, 18 Round Hill Road, granting approval of a variance to construct an addition on an undersized lot. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian.
Have a motion in a second to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
And lastly, Resolution 2021-25, Shane, Block 7806, Lot 33, 1 Columbia Court, granting variance approval to construct a 10 by 12 shed and a 6-foot solid fence in front yard. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Have a motion in a second to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
And that concludes the resolutions for this evening.
Thank you. So they're moving right along. Next item up would be minutes. Are there any minutes for approval?
Not this evening.
No minutes tonight. All right. Then moving along to vouchers. I have two vouchers. I have one for Danielle Sinowitz as our recording secretary, and I have one for King Reporting, our zoning board stenographer. One in the amount of 150 for Danielle and 250 for King. Can I have a motion in a second to pay the bills?
Motion. Make a motion to pay all bills.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Okay. Moving along through the calendar, we have nothing under announcements.
Mr. Chairman, we do have an announcement, actually.
All right.
And that is that two things, if I may apologize for stealing, potentially stealing your thunder, but both alternates are eligible to vote this evening.
Oh, okay.
And on behalf of the board and through the chair, we would like to welcome Ms. Bradley to the, to the board.
So you didn't even get a chance to catch your breath. You're, you're in play immediately.
That's how we work here.
Right into it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gertner. The next line item up is, is executive session. Originally in our calendar, we were going to go into executive session for reorganization of board members, but Mr. Costanzo could not make it tonight, board members. And so what I'm seeking from the board members is a consensus to put this off to the next meeting when we'll have all our board members and Mr. Costanzo is here. So I would just like to know if everybody here sitting on the dais is okay with moving that portion to next, to our next, I think it's August 4th, our next session.
Fine.
Yep.
We have a consensus, all in all, all right. Thank you very much, Board members. So that will happen on August 4th. However, there is a few other items here under the meeting, under matters for discussion. The next one, and I'm going to parse some of this out, one is meeting dates and times. So they need some meeting dates and times from us, but we do have a rather interesting calendar coming up and some conflicts. So board members, here's, here's what I understand is happening. On September 1, which, which is one of the targeted dates, our council, he's, he's on a, on a vacation, and that presents a little problem, but not an insurmountable problem. So the concept is that Mr. Gertner will provide coverage for us, provide coverage. And since there are, I understand, quite a few bulk variances that we can hear, we're going to put on as, as many as are reasonable, Mr. Papporo, on that night to deal with the bulks. Does that work for you, Mr. Papporo?
That's our goal, yes.
Excellent. So, so Sean, I don't know that we need a motion on.
Not specifically. The, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the more important is where you're leading to.
All right.
This is the next September.
All right. And then the next date that comes up is September 15. Now, September 15, as I understand it, is a holiday. It's Yom Kippur, and that poses some, that poses some interesting problems for both our council and other members, as well as applicants. And so what the suggestion is, we have another date in the end of September that would work, and it's September 29. So the concept is, let's, let's cross off the September 15 Yom Kippur date and substitute in the September 29 date in instead. Is that okay with everybody on the board? We okay with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Papporo, does that work? Does that work for you as well in your calendaring?
It does.
Great. Thank you. All right. So calendaring then is, I think we have that resolved. Now, the next thing up here for matters for discussion is we can, we can move tonight, board members, to, to consider our recording secretary reappointment, the recording firm and the official newspaper. So if I've got this right, and they'll correct me if I'm wrong, we would seek a motion from the board to reappoint Danielle Sinowitz as our recording secretary, to reappoint King Reporting as our zoning board stenographer, and in terms of the newspapers, to again confirm or reconfirm that our official newspapers are the Asbury Park Press, the Tri-Town News, and the Jackson Times. If that's good with everybody, I would appreciate a motion in a second to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Are you including the meeting dates?
And the meeting dates.
So does that, so you should at least announce the meeting dates verbally.
All of them? All right. Thanks, Sean. I'll do that. Okay. All right. So they, just hold a motion. The meeting dates are as follows. So we'd have August 4th and August 18, 2021, September 1, and now September 29 of 2021. September 15 is now out. October 6 and October 20 of 2021, November 3 and November 17 of 2021, December 1 and December 15 of 2021. Then on January 5, 2022, there will be a reorganization and regular meeting. Then January 19, 2022, February 2 and 16 of 2022, March 2 and 16 of 2022, April 6 and 20 of 2022, May 4 and 18 of 2022, and June 1 and 15 of 2022, with July 20 of 2022, reorganization and regular meeting, only one meeting that month. All right. With that, I again renew my request for a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up is an administrative approval, but I think I should get the professionals to introduce themselves and be sworn before we jump into the administrative approval.
So each of you are raising your right hands. To each of you, solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present on, before, and behalf of the board shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Whoever wants to start can start.
Miskovic, Board Traffic Engineer.
Jeffrey Papporo, Zoning Officer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. The matter on tonight for administrative approval is MIB Properties LLC, Oliveri Funeral Home. Is anybody here on behalf of that app? Great. Thank you.
Yes, we are.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from this application. This property is within 200 feet of Wesley Lake Golf and Country Club. They were noticed for that application when it was originally made. Since I'm on the Board of Trustees of that organization, I have to recuse myself.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Thank you.
But you got to tell me that stuff. It's easy.
And just a quick point. Make sure everyone uses their mics, please. Make sure that they're turned on and close to your.
Yeah. And, and a reason, not the reason, but a reason for that is these meetings are now being one positive out of the pandemic, in my opinion at least, is the use of technology. The meetings are being streamed still so that folks in the hinterlands can hear us.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. May proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Mark Escalella. That's M-A-R-C-S-G-A-L-E-L-L-A, of the law firm of R.C. Shane Associates in Toms River, on behalf of the applicant, MIB Properties. This is, we're seeking administrative approval tonight. This project, which is the Oliveri Funeral Home on the corner of Manhattan Street and Cooks Bridge Road, was formally approved by this board back in 2015. At that time, the board approved the site with two interior directional signs. It's our application tonight to add three additional interior directional signs. My engineer tonight will be Christopher P. Rosati of the firm of W, I'm sorry, FWH Associates. I believe he has testified here before the board. If not, I can have him put his credentials on the record.
Please.
Okay.
So, thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and through the chairman, briefly your credentials.
Christopher P. Rosati, ROSATI, Licensed Professional Engineer and Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with FWH Associates. I have been, I'm a graduate of Rutgers University with a degree in civil engineering, graduated in 1994. I became licensed in 1999 as a professional engineer and 2000 as a professional planner.
Your credentials.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you testifying as, as an engineer or as a planner?
Both.
Okay.
Mr. Rosati, could you give the board a quick overview of what, why we're here tonight?
Yes. The board I have, I guess we can mark that A1. It's simply a colored rendering of the property signage plan that was submitted as part of the application. We are here for the Oliveri Funeral Home. It's on the corner of Manhattan Street and Cooks Bridge Road, specifically Block 14801, Lot 5.02. We're in the planned retirement community zone. We have a six-acre tract. We're bounded by, to the north, the Jackson Papa Warner Field and the Jackson M.U.A. To the, to the south, Cooks Bridge Road's our boundary. To the east, we have a JCPN L right-of-way, and to the west, Manhattan Street. The site currently has the funeral home that's under construction. We're hoping to be open fairly soon, believe mid-August is the, is the target date. The approval is for the funeral home. The other ancillary items that were approved back in 2015. Again, we're here tonight to get the board's approval for some additional internal directional signs. You can see on A1, we have some details of the directional signs. The directional signs are approximately 10 square feet in area, where only 4 square feet is allowed by ordinance. In my estimation, the board has the, has the authority to grant the variance for that under the C2 criteria.
Whoa, 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 whoa. See that? So, did you notice? Because if, if you need a variance, if it triggers a variance.
Yeah. Mr. Gertner, our notice did include the variances.
So how is this an administrative approval? I just, I'm, I'm, so you noticed for this application?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And we did notice that there would be variances.
I have notices in front of me.
I can provide you, Mr. Gertner, with, I can provide you, Mr. Gertner, with a copy of the notice if you desire.
So I just really, the, the question is, and I apologize, slight panic from my end, quite frankly, this is really the not administrative approval. You're seeking variances and an amendment to the site plan to permit these additional signs.
Essentially, yes.
You know, I.
Mr. Gertner, I have to ask you this question. The, the calendar structures it as an administrative approval. I have no doubt that counsel did what he said he did in terms of making an application for a variance and is willing and able to proceed in that manner. If we continue to proceed in that manner, although we've got it potentially technically in the wrong place, we have it as administrative approval instead of an actual application, does that somehow sabotage or fault the application and in our proceeding?
That's just based on how the agenda is. I would say not. We, my position regarding notice issues such as this is the applicant is now aware of that. Certainly, the agenda was published. The applicant would proceed at their own, at their own risk.
Okay.
But I have no issue that the board can take jurisdiction over the matter. First of all, it has primary jurisdiction because it voted on the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just assume we sort of breeze through this because it's a fairly simplistic thing.
Yeah.
But the application got submitted as an administrative approval. So I guess, my question is, is there a record that shows, other than the June 3, 2021 FWH submission for an administrative approval, that they were asking for variances? Because the board and the board's technical staff processed an administrative completeness application. You have a variance application, there's a checklist of things that are required.
So if I'm hearing you correctly.
I don't want to split hairs, but.
But if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that the process may have not been followed properly for us to hear a variance application tonight.
All I can tell you is what the board staff handed out, which is what the board members probably have, which is an application that includes a cover letter from FWH dated June 3 of this year requesting administrative approval. So if, again, the board's professionals can deal with a variance application here tonight because, quite frankly, it wouldn't be an administrative approval. The signs are too big to be approved administratively. They need to be a variance. The question is, we don't think that the, that that information ever got out of either to Town Hall or to the board. Sort of checking on that now.
For the moment, yes. Let's see the counsel and Mr. Papporo come up. Okay. Counselor?
I'll just lay it out as I see it, and ultimately, I think it's first for the board to determine if they want to take jurisdiction for this particular application under these particular circumstances. For reasons that I can only presume are based on the applicant's initial transmittal letter, dated June 3, it came into the board as a quote-unquote administrative approval. There was some level of internal review, it appears, where Mr. Hill was able to get involved and indicated both to the applicant's engineer and to, quite frankly, our board secretary, that if the applicant, I'm summarizing. If the application triggered new variances, it is not an administrative approval. It's the amendments, it's seeking amendments and new variants, as I articulated. I'm presuming, based on the evidence that I see in the file, that the applicant took note of that and treated it internally themselves as a variance application. They noticed as if it was a variance application. They, you know, sent, sent the notices that way. However, internally for us, the applicant, maybe they didn't pay the right escrows. There were no reviews that a new variance would have triggered because what didn't happen between the time, as it appears at least, between the time of notice to the applicant that, hey, it appears really that you need to notice for an amended site plan and new variances, and actually coming up, no one caught the fact that the applicant caught that this was in fact a, you know, a variance application. So it appears to me that this is, there's notice to, to the public, right? The public, the 200-foot folks, and notice to the newspaper, noticed for at least assigned variances. I don't know if you called it an amended site plan or not. I don't, I, you know, I didn't pull, pull that piece. So that's one, one issue. The second issue is more internal, and I would leave this really for the zoning officer first and foremost. If the board were to accept jurisdiction as is, you know, we would have to take some representation that the applicant would pay the additional escrows and fees, which I, I'm going to presume would not be an issue.
That, that would not be an issue, Mr. Gertner.
Yeah, I, I would presume not. So then the, really then, the, the question becomes, let's take it in, in converse, and I'm posing these things. So let's say the board says, wait a minute. If you're not concerned, if the applicant is not concerned with the notice as presented to the public, because it's, I will put that to the table, that's their risk. Should the board or our board professionals be concerned internally that, quite frankly, in this particular circumstance, there wasn't sufficient review internally to prepare the board? That's really a board question at the end of the day. I can't, you know, I can't, there's no legal issue to that, quite frankly. If you were going to carry this, the applicant would ask, again, I presume the applicant would say, well, Mr. Gertner, I understand the board doesn't want to yet vest itself with jurisdiction, however, we noticed, so I would ask that you carry the matter to whatever new date without further notice required. Because your applicant's position is, we noticed adequately. And Mr. Gertner was saying yes to that.
Yes, I totally agree with that. I mean, from our.
I'm looking for a last thing.
Yeah.
So really what it is, is I think, for me to cut to the chase, it's, I can't tell you you can do this or you can't because, quite frankly, the situation, doing this for 30 years, this is brand new.
So let me, let me tell you my position as, as the chair and a non-expert.
Yeah.
In the scheme of things. So we're volunteer board members. We take great guidance from our professionals. I, I rely heavily, as I'm sure my board members do, on the review letters that come out of the engineer when appropriate, out of, out of Mr. Peters, on the, on the, on the planning issues when appropriate, and from other professionals, if necessary, Mr. Miskovic. I don't see that Mr. Miskovic is involved in this one, but Mr. Peters is highly involved in this one. So, Ernie, I'm really going to dump this largely back into your lap. Now, I see that it, we're talking about signs. The focus on is variances are signs. Maybe a simple issue, if you can guide us through this without review letter being in front of us, and you don't need to see any other review or to do any type of research, you know, it seems like maybe this is almost a no harm, no foul kind of thing if you can keep us on track and guide us through.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, if the board's okay with that, we can certainly hear the testimony. If somehow we get into the weeds on something, we'll have to call no joy and carry the application. But for purposes of getting started and hearing the applicant's testimony, if they correctly set forth the variances and the proofs that are required, and the board's satisfied with that, we'll just, I'll go through the sections of the ordinance the board needs to know or that Mr. Gertner needs to put in a resolution, and we'll see if we can knock this one off.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
You make the representation, though, that you'll sort of file non-protunct an application internally for a variance.
That's fine. We'll file the application as, as you requested, Mr. Gertner.
So, so board members, we're going to, we're going to keep jurisdiction, and we're going to run with this, and we'll be guided accordingly by Mr. Peters, Mr. Hill, and Mr. Gertner as we go. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Book.
Floor is yours, sir.
I'm turning it over to my engineer once again.
Appreciate the courtesies very much, so thank you. So the section of the ordinance we're talking about is Section 244-207B4A, which dictates the allowable size for a directional sign. The ordinance allows only 4 square feet, and we are asking for 10 square feet. The application is for the specific tract we already noted when I introduced the application. Oh, sure. Yeah, I have one.
Yes. Oh, great. Good idea.
Absolutely. Thank you. Old habits die hard with the small boards. In my professional opinion, for this specific use and intent, again, it's the funeral home with other ancillary uses, larger signs are needed to convey their message, to ensure the safety of, of patrons and visitors. A sign that may not be large enough could actually create a traffic hazard, and in such case, granting the variance for a larger sign is necessary to promote public safety, which is one of the main purposes of zoning as set forth in the purpose of the Act under The site is such that there is. So, we want them a little bit larger, just to make it a little bit easier for the drivers to read for a safety standpoint.
Mr. Rosati, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. Are these signs intended to be lit?
No. They are not going to be lit. They are just merely going to be emblazoned with reflective surfaces, but they are not going to be lit at all. They're just going to be freestanding signs, 10 square feet in size.
And if, and again, I apologize, but I'm just looking at the proposed improvement, and I heard you say that you're going from a four-square foot to a 10-square foot. How does that reconcile with the proposed improvement in the application? It says two seven-foot-high monument signs and five three-and-a-half-foot-high directional signs.
The monument sign was previously approved with the original application. We actually got a variance for the height of the sign, where six feet is allowed by ordinance, and we got a height of seven feet. If you can see on the top of the sign, there's a curvilinear element, decorative element to the sign. The maximum height there is seven feet, and as part of the original approval, that variance was granted.
And I saw, I saw on the submit, and I guess it's in the bottom of that document on the screen, that's what the sign is going to look like?
Yes.
Through the chair. Mr. Rosati, would you con...and if you disagree, please do. Would you consider this request almost generated by field changes? Like, once you started to construct the site, you determined, based upon your knowledge and expertise, that this would actually make the site function more safely?
Yes. As we go along with the construction, and actually, the six years since we've been approved, things have evolved, and we've become more knowledgeable on how things are safer. So, that's why we decided, at this point, you know what, it makes the most sense for the safety of our patrons to ask for this relief.
And if I may just jump in, what triggered this application really was the monument sign, where there was relief granted for the height and whatnot. But the crux of the reason why I wanted everyone to come in and reanalyze the monument sign was the pillars and the...the sign itself may have been approved by the board, but all the extra pillars and brick kind of makes a sign a lot bigger than I think what the board had approved on the initial application. And the directional signs were kind of a secondary component to the, to this application.
Okay, through the chairman, then. Just to address that, Mr. Rosati, if I may, do you recall what differences in design that seven-foot sign, as you show it, are to what was originally approved?
I do not have the original detail of it. It was my understanding that it was very similar to what was approved initially. Again, Mr. Pupuro is right, the sign itself does meet the requirements. The definition is a little, it allows the sign to be, I want to say, the monument itself to be bigger as part of supporting structures. But this is the sign the applicant wants to go for. It's, I can't see the dimensions on, I'll have to go to my other exhibit. I have it right here. Overall length of 14 feet. The bulk of the height is six feet, seven feet, again, to that curvilinear element on the top.
Anything further, Counselor, or Mr. Rosati?
No.
I have nothing further.
Mr. Peters.
Mr. Chairman, the site itself is located in the PRC Zone, which is governed by Ordinance Chapter 244-53, B as in boy, 244-53. Subsection B6 permits his accessory uses, signs, in accordance with the sign ordinance. So, Mr. Rosati has indicated that they're requesting relief from Section 244-207B4A, where four-foot directional signs are permitted, and 10.2 square feet is proposed. Take no exception with the planning testimony that was offered. I would ask Mr. Rosati if the location of the signs gives you any pause in relation, given that they're 43 inches high, with regards to circulation around the site. They're sort of over drivers' eye height, so to speak.
Well, the bulk of the information regarding where it's going to be is lower than that. So, in my estimation, the important, I'll call it sign information, as far as where things will be, other than the advertising of Oliveri on top, I think they would be adequate for a safety standpoint.
Thank you. As it relates to the monument signs, monument signs are permitted under Section 244-2076, which are, which is titled ground signs, but they're listed as ground-mounted signs or monument signs. Mr. Rosati is correct, under 244-2076B, the original application asked for seven-foot-high signs, where six foot is the maximum permitted, and that relief was granted. There is not a size limitation for either this zone or this particular type of use. However, since, I think we're probably all in agreement that this sign's probably a bit bigger than the other one, we should probably, out of an abundance of caution, at least approve the sign itself. I don't know that it requires relief, but we should simply note for the record, so that when someone goes into Jeff's office to get a sign permit, that these signs were reviewed and approved in 2021 as part of this application.
And you're saying that specifically to the monument sign, or to all of the signs?
Well, if the board grants the relief for the size of the directional sign, which is the variance that is required, under 244-207B4A, I think we should also note that the board has reviewed and approved the size of the monument, or the amendment to the originally approved monument sign. Because since we don't have that information in front of us, we don't know how big it was, and if for some reason this one is bigger than the other one, at least the board looked at it, reviewed it, and approved it tonight, and they can go in and pull their permit from the zoning officer.
Mr. Peters, just so that I'm clear, I mean, I'm looking at the Oliveri proper signage plan dated 6/2/21, and I think it's Mr. Rosati, that's the plan that you're proposing. I have the right one, I'm looking at the right one?
Correct.
And so, Mr. Peters, if I understand you correctly, if there's going to be a motion to approve, you're talking about referencing the signs and the dimensions as they exist within this plan, so as to memorialize them in the record?
Yes. That way, this particular plan can be used to pull the zoning permits for all the signs that are outstanding. It's just an efficiency.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions of the applicant, or Mr. Peters? None? Mr. Hill, any comment?
Mr. Hill did all the work behind the scenes. Let's just make sure we're straight about that. I'll be here, and I'll accept the award, but Jeff and Evan and Frank did all the work.
So, seeing no further questions from the board or from our professionals? If you're...are you, has your testimony concluded?
Yes, it is.
Yes, all right. Well, in that case, then, I'll close this portion and open it to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this application? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public portion. All right, board members, it's ours. Any thoughts, deliberations, motion?
When it was an administrative, there's a leak.
Well, I wouldn't, at this point...
When it was an administrative, there's no public being...
Well, no, no, no. So, I think we've already, the board, by taking jurisdiction, has determined it's not an administrative approval. It requires an amended site plan as to the signs and the variance release as articulated. It's the applicant's argument, they've made at least C2 proof, they've presented at least C2 proofs related to support for the new signage, both from an artistic vantage point, I presume, as to the larger monument sign, and certainly for safety and security of the traveling public and their own customers on the internal basis.
Right, so what we're assuming, 14 feet of the sign?
I think what you're approving are the signs as set forth on the plan submitted dated 6/2/21.
And do we have jurisdiction over the escrow at this juncture?
Well, they've also agreed as a condition of approval that they'll submit, legal term, non-pro-tung, meaning they'll submit it as if it had been submitted on time, the variance application for the record.
Do you want to add in the motion?
I'm trying to articulate it for you, but yes.
So, why are you thinking about that?
If you want, if you, I've made all the applicants, I've summarized the applicant's testimony. It's up to the board to determine what they want to do.
Okay. I'll make the motion to accept this application and approve it, so there are changes that they've made.
Do you have a second?
Second. Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
We want to thank the board and its professional staff for their courtesy tonight. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
After the meeting, I learned some, remind me, I'll go into what happens internally. Well, they got noticed.
If you had been 200 feet, because someone's bored, I said...
No, they got noticed because they noticed as if it was a variance.
Just to be safe.
Okay, next up on the calendar is application number one, KKV Investments LLC.
Good evening, members of the board. Michael York, Noven York, Jacobus and Dooley, on behalf of the applicant, KKV Investments LLC. You don't want me, yeah? Sorry, which part? The whole thing? Sorry. Michael York, Noven York, Jacobus and Dooley, on behalf of the applicant, KKV Investments LLC.
Good evening, Mr. York.
Good evening. Well, we appeared before the board last year, maybe the year before that, I've lost track of time, for a use variance. This is for a veterinary clinic. The use variance was already granted by this board, thank you. Now, we're appearing for a preliminary and final site plan. I will have one or two witnesses. One is our engineer, and the other is the actual applicant, who will go over some of what's in Mr. Peters' review letter, and then I will turn it over to the engineer, who can answer the rest of the questions.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Bat, do you mind shutting the door, Mr. Bat? Oh, she got it already.
Thank you.
All right, who am I swearing in?
Who's being sworn in first? Okay.
You raised your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you have to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation with the applicant?
Sure. My name is Kelly Vogel, last name Vias and Victor, O-G-E-L. I am co-owner of Jackson Veterinary Hospital, which is planning to take location, and a member of KKV Investments.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to indulge us a little bit.
Sure.
Acoustics are bad. The closer you can stay to that mic, the better. And I tried to hear your name, and I couldn't.
It's Kelly Vogel.
Kelly Vogel, okay.
Yes. And I'm part owner, half owner of Jackson Veterinary Hospital, which will be in this building, and part of KKV Investments, which is building the building.
Thank you.
And I won't use the microphone, because I'm generally loud and obnoxious, and it's fine, because I'm a lawyer. So, I can't imagine, certainly not mine. Kelly, can you tell the board what you do for a living?
Sure. I'm a veterinarian, primary small animal, household pets, small exotics, small reptiles.
And where's your practice currently located?
We're currently on 33 South New Prospect Road in Jackson, across from Romeo's Plaza.
How long have you been there?
We've been there, the practice has been there since the '60s, but we've only practiced since 2015, and I've been employed there since 2006.
And the goal of this application would be to pick up the practice and move it to the new location, correct?
Pretty much. We're just running out of space where we are.
Okay. There are a number of issues I'm going to ask you about in Mr. Peters' July 12, 2021 letter, which hopefully you can answer.
Sure.
Is there any, well, I'm an engineer, but tell the board exactly what the proposed hours of operation are.
Proposed hours, right now, we are Monday through Friday, from 9 to 5, Saturdays from 8 to 1, and closed on Sundays. No overnight boarding or care.
And how many employees we have?
Approximately 10.
How many cars will your employees have approximately?
Approximately 10, one car per person.
And there's plenty of parking?
Yes.
And there's, there are going to be also plenty of parking for, do we call them patients?
Clients.
Clients?
Yes.
Will there be plenty of parking for the clients?
Yes.
Do you feel that there's going to be any traffic congestion as a result of the use in that site?
No, we're on a very busy road right now, and I don't feel we cause any congestion.
And no noise as well?
No. Like I said, we're only open 9 to 5, no boarding, no overnight care, so nobody will be there past 5 o'clock.
And there's no particular fire or safety hazard that comes along with the veterinary practice?
Uh, no.
How would she know that?
Because she says...
There's been no fires before?
Yes, we've never had a hazard in the time we've been there.
Will there be any deliveries ongoing in the, on the property?
Food and supplies, FedEx, UPS, that kind of thing.
So, normal office-style deliveries?
Yeah, only during office hours.
No giant 18-wheelers coming going?
No.
How often, if you know, will refuse be removed from the site?
Um...
And if you don't know, your engineer will, so don't worry about it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. And are there any kind of hazardous-type materials that you're going to be using on site?
Uh, no, medical waste, and we contract with a company that picks that up and disposes of for us.
And they specifically pick up medical waste?
Yes.
Hang on, Mr. York, can you hear them? I can, but we're having some problems still.
Maybe use the microphone, there's any questions?
Can you not hear the questions or her answers?
Questions, any? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. Does this one work?
No.
The last question was about medical waste. How will you dispose of medical waste?
Medical waste, we have a contract company that picks up and disposes for us.
One of the, another one of the questions in Mr. Peters' letter, is there any run area outdoors for the animals?
No, leash walk only outside. We'll just have indoor runs for care during the day.
And leash walk, meaning clients can walk their dogs on your property, and then you can as well?
Yes.
But they're never off the leash in those areas?
No.
I have no... Proposed hours, right now, we are Monday through Friday from 9 to 5, Saturdays from 8 to 1, and closed on Sundays. No overnight boarding or care.
And how many employees we have?
Approximately 10.
How many cars will your employees have approximately?
Approximately 10, one car per person.
And there's plenty of parking?
Yes.
And there's... There are going to be also plenty of parking for... Do we call them patients?
Clients.
Clients?
Yes.
Will there be plenty of parking for the clients?
Yes.
Do you feel that there's going to be any traffic congestion as a result of the use in that site?
No, we're on a very busy road right now, and I don't feel we cause any congestion.
And no noise as well?
No. Like I said, we're only open 9 to 5, no boarding, no overnight care, so nobody will be there past 5 o'clock.
And there's no particular fire or safety hazard that comes along with a veterinary practice?
Uh, no.
How would she know that?
Because she says...
There's been no fires before?
Yes, we've never had a hazard in the time we've been there.
Will there be any deliveries ongoing on the property?
Food and supplies, FedEx, UPS, that kind of thing.
So, normal office-style deliveries?
Yeah, only during office hours.
No giant 18-wheelers coming going?
Nope.
How often, if you know, will refuse be removed from the site?
Um...
And if you don't know, your engineer will, so don't worry about it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. And are there any kind of hazardous-type materials that you're going to be using on site?
Uh, no, medical waste, and we contract with a company that picks that up and disposes of for us.
And they specifically pick up medical waste?
Yes.
Hang on, Mr. York. Can you hear them? I can, but we're having some problems still.
Maybe use the microphone. There's any questions?
Sure.
Can you not hear the questions or her answers?
Questions, any? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. Does this one work? No.
The last question was about medical waste. How will you dispose of medical waste?
Medical waste, we have a contract company that picks up and disposes for us.
One of the... Another one of the questions in Mr. Peters' letter, is there any run area outdoors for the animals?
No, leash walk only outside. We'll just have indoor runs for care during the day.
And leash walk, meaning clients can walk their dogs on your property and then you can as well?
Yes.
But they're never off the leash in those areas?
No.
I have no other questions of the applicant. The rest of the comments will be addressed by the applicant's engineer.
Needles and syringes part of that, I didn't hear how that was...
Yes, needles, syringes, any sharps, scalpel blades, things like that. They all go into medical waste containers, and then we contract with Abby Glenn, who comes and picks them up when we fill to a certain weight or capacity, and they dispose of them for us with state regulations, and we file a report every year of medical waste disposal.
Your decibels are great, so...
Yes, Mr. Hill?
Just one question. I don't exactly know how to ask this question, but when you have an animal that goes to the great beyond, what do you do with it?
So, we have a freezer storage on site, and then we contract with a company that comes and picks them up for us to cremate them. Or we have... Jen owns Forever Remembered. It's the old Jackson Post Office. She also picks up from us for cremation. So, there's no on-site cremation and limited storage.
They don't... You don't keep them overnight, or you might keep them overnight?
We keep them for... Until they're picked up in the freezer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Ms. Rich?
Sure.
He and I have a... We have a... I don't know what we do.
Absolutely. So, we're stored with DEA compliance. We have a lock box. With only a certain number of us knowing the code, the key is stored separately from the lock box, so one of us has to unlock the key to then unlock the lock box. We keep a medical log in compliance with New Jersey State and DEA.
No further questions of the doctor?
Thank you.
I'll have our engineer sworn in first.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then through the chair, credentials to his and the board's request?
Yes, thank you. My name is Mark with a K, Zelina, Z-E-L-I-N-A. I'm a senior engineer with the firm O'Donnell Stanton Associates in Toms River, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I have been so since 1985. I have a... Received a bachelor of science degree or obtained a bachelor of science degree in 1981 from Lafayette College, and I've been practicing civil engineering all those years since then. I've not appeared before this board specifically, but I have appeared before numerous boards across the state of New Jersey.
The credentials are accepted. Are you testifying as an engineer solely tonight?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
I'm proud...
I must point out one thing to the board. I am disappointed in our engineer. I didn't realize he went to Lafayette College. I am a Lehigh grad.
We're done.
The application is done. Very disappointing.
Just walked out.
My father wouldn't have let him get hired. Mr. Zelina, can you give the board a brief overview?
I can't help myself, Mike. You and I have the same style, because I tell stories about my old man, too.
Can you give the board a brief overview, but point out one thing, that there are no variances required of this application, correct? Other than the use variance?
That is correct. Use variance was previously granted. The application here before you this evening requires no additional variances. There will be a couple of design waivers that we'll speak of, speak to, but absolutely no waivers. I have an exhibit on the easel at the moment, marked A1.
Yes, please. And just again, because in this new age, was this submitted by PDF so it could also go up?
No, this particular exhibit was not.
Okay.
It is simply an aerial depiction of the... It's actually not even labeled. It was just an aerial photo that I just wanted to put in the context where the site is located and what the areas are around it. The property...
If after the fact you'd like it submitted by PDF, we certainly...
We would like...
No problem.
Just for completeness purposes.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, we're speaking to Block 902, Lot 10. It's depicted on this aerial... Or encircled by a red line, which represents a property line. As you see, it's an approximately square property, contains 1.6 acres of land. It's in the neighborhood commercial zone, and we're not even going to address it, but we have a... The veterinary hospital is not a permitted use, so we applied... This applicant came to the board over a year ago and obtained the use variance for the use. I do want to point out that the lots surrounding the property are also in the NC zone, or neighborhood commercial zone. You'll see to the north, the car salvage yard, auto salvage yard. To the east, there's a vacant lot, currently nothing taking place on that. And then the auto salvage yard also extends around the property to the west and back out to Jackson's Mill Road, which the property has frontage on. Across the street, there are a couple of residential properties located in the R3 zone, and just to the north and... I'm sorry, to the east, there's shopping centers. Shopping centers at the intersection of Jackson Mills Road and Chandler Road. The property is currently vacant. It's lightly wooded or sparsely wooded, some mature trees, and we've identified those as part of the plan, and we'll deal with the... Deal with the shade tree, forest or whatever, and take care of what needs to be done as it relates to this tree replacement. I just wanted to put it in context there. I'm going to... Even though the building's shown in orange here, the green's the cleared area of the site, and even though it's shown in blue, it's really an infiltration basin. So, that just puts it in context to the land surrounding it. I'll go to another exhibit with a little more detail for the details of the application. Good. Again, this specific exhibit is not... Was not submitted as a PDF, but what it is, is a colored rendering of the plan that is included in the plan set, and it's...
So, we'll mark that A2 specifically, though?
Yes. It's Sheet 3 of 13 in the set, so the non-colorized version is a part of the application, a part of the PDF set that was included. So, this is A2. Yeah, I can speak to either one as we go. What I did is I showed the proposed building in brown, the proposed parking lot in gray, the detention basin or infiltration basin in a little darker green, the cleared areas in a lighter green, and the existing forested area that will remain forested in the darker green on this exhibit. So, the proposal before you this evening is for a building that contains 2,682 square feet. The building itself is 41 feet by 65 feet, and you heard previously what the building's going to be used for. Pretty straightforward. It's a two-story building. All the operations of the facility will take place on the first floor. The second floor is a vacant space for storage as it relates to the operation.
And that's because there's no basement, correct?
I'm sorry?
Is there a basement?
There is no basement. There's a crawl space associated with it. The building's going to be serviced by well and septic. There's a dark green area near the front of the... In the front of the property that represents the location of the septic system, proposed well is to the rear. There are 21 spaces, parking spaces, proposed. Only seven are required by the ordinance, but based on the operation of the current facility and in consultation with the owner and operator, we feel that the 21 spaces are required for the project. At the rear of the building, we have a dumpster enclosure. It's 10 feet by 18 feet, large enough to store two receptacles, one for regular trash, not animal waste or anything like that, and then recyclables as well. Now, as far as the frequency at which those are picked up, it's based on use. It's a private corridor, and they can be scheduled on a regular basis, whether it's once weekly, twice weekly, or as needed. So, we can't say with certainty whether it's going to be once a week, twice a week as things go on. Right now, it'd be anticipated to be once a week. Hopefully, as business goes great, maybe more, but that's not anticipated at this time. We've arranged for the parking lot so that a trash truck can enter the parking lot, pull forward to pick up the trash containers, back up a space that stripes not for parking, and then exit the site. Pretty clear maneuver. And we also feel that with the areas at the end of the parking lot being striped and signed so that the... No parking can take place there, if someone were to enter the parking lot, drive past the space, they have plenty of room to turn around and go back to a parking space or exit the site. The site's laid out very nicely. We talked about the detention or infiltration area at the southeast corner of the site. It's the lowest side of the site, so the basin really couldn't be... Couldn't easily be located anywhere else on the site. That's why it's there. Septic system located at the other corner. We can go through the review letters. We have two review letters from your professionals if we want to discuss them in detail or briefly or however you like to proceed.
Go ahead, Mr. Hill.
So, I don't think there's a need to go through point by point, but our engineering review letter was dated May 29, 2021, and in response to that review letter, we received revised plans and a summary of the plan revisions from Mr. Zelina dated June 28, 2021. And in that... In the revised plans and in the response letter, the applicant's team has pretty much addressed all of our engineering concerns. We had some minor comments on the stormwater management system, points of clarification, some additional detailing, and then just also asking for some testimony, which has already been provided. So, from an engineering perspective, the stormwater system is designed to conform with the standards and the state standards and the township ordinance, and the site is designed to substantially conform with the ordinance.
Could you address the septic, though? I know that we often have issues and concerns over septic with residential premises and how many people are living there. I know this is not a residential premise, but I'd like to better understand the impact of the use of this property, the septic system that's intended. If there's a better way to handle the septic issue.
So, we're very... You know, the board's familiar with residential septic systems, obviously, but in those same... Within those same regulations, state regulations, there are requirements as far as designing systems for a certain daily flow for commercial uses and non-residential uses. So, the applicant has indicated that there is an area on site, and it appears that they've done two... They've performed two soil logs that indicates that there's an area on site that's suitable for the on-site disposal of wastewater generated by the facility. As part of our package, we don't receive those septic designs, alright? That's really not our... It's not a land use issue. It's a county Board of Health and/or state NJDEP issue. In this case, it's likely under 2,000 gallons per day, so it will be reviewed and approved by the Ocean County Board of Health. The one thing we are asking applicants now moving in town within the last six months is, as part of resolution compliance, please submit a copy of this approved septic design plans and certification by the Board of Health. We want to see that as a condition of outside agency approval.
As well you should.
No problem. Yep. But the overall, the septic system for a commercial use is likely... I'm assuming it's an office space. It's an office use. You know, there may be some additional provisions in there for also the number of employees in an eight-hour shift and possibly for sinks, if there's additional wastewater required for sinks as well.
I guess, you'll help. I know that in our... In other considerations for residential premises, we're always addressing this concept of nitrate load. Is that an issue in a commercial setting such as this? Or not?
I would say no. The reason why we are more conscientious of it in a residential development is those developments are proposing to construct homes... Or I'm sorry, create lots and construct homes on undersized lots for the zone. So, we see in one-acre lots or less. And in that case, the board has adopted the opinion to follow the Pine Lands opinions regarding alternative treatment systems for septic on undersized lots, just as the Pine Lands does. In this case, this is not considered to be an undersized lot for commercial purposes, and there's no concern that I have, and there's nothing in the regulations that would point me towards having to require more stringent standards for a commercial use. The disposal bed and all the components are sized accordingly for this use.
Anything more to say? Anything further to say? Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report, a second report dated July 12 of this year. I'll just sort of run through the things I think we need to get on the record. On Page 4 of the report, Mr. Zelina, we ask under signs if there's any wall signage proposed.
There are none proposed.
Pardon?
There are none, no.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Page 5, top of the page, C2. Would you explain to the board the issue of sidewalks along the street frontage?
Yes, the applicant or the application does not propose a sidewalk along the project's frontage, but we understand that the contribution to the township's safety fund or sidewalk fund is required, and we are prepared to do that.
Thank you. Under D landscaping 1 through 5, we'll sort of lump them all together. They relate to buffer requirements and some planting requirements that you're requesting waiver for relief from.
Yeah, matter of fact...
Could you just give us some brief testimony to support the waivers?
I most definitely will. And for the record, we are requesting a total of six waivers, or design waivers, the first of which is the sidewalk, for not to construct a sidewalk along the street frontage. So, that'd be the first waiver.
Why? Sorry. You got us in harm's way. The question is why?
Well, if there was an issue, we will construct. Our thought was there are no connecting sidewalks. The sidewalks would go to nowhere, so the... We would be happy, you know...
I'm visualizing the property. I've driven by it many times. I know the corner, and so as far as you know, there are no sidewalks intended to the right of you, to the left of you, around the corner to you. There's no sidewalks there at all.
I mean, it's not a saying, oh, you know... It just didn't seem to make sense, and if we... The difference between constructing and making a contribution is immaterial to the applicant. So, if the board sees otherwise, we'll construct it, but the... We're just requesting the waiver by virtue of the application.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to see some decoration if that detention basin took right up to the street like that. I need to see some trees or something, some kind of barrier.
There is... The detention basin is fenced in. There's a four-foot-high chain link fence around it, and if we look at the landscape plan, there are shade trees along the frontage of the property in front of the detention basin. One of the other waivers that we're going to get to is we're not asking... We're asking for a waiver of shade trees along the western part of the property, only because our septic system's located there, and out of concern for the roots and interference with the septic system, we're asking not to plant the shade trees.
But...
Yes, sir.
...a chain link fence sitting there as a barrier. So, can you decorate with that to make it more pleasing to the eyes?
Well, would you, I mean, consider like additional planting as decorative or dressing it up a little bit? We could do that.
Yeah, Mr. Zelina, even if we took some of the shrubs that were being planted on the far side of the detention basin, opposite the street frontage, just bring those up to the street frontage, to the extent we can provide a visual barrier for the stormwater management system from the street, we certainly want to be able to see the building, nice new building. But to the extent we can hide a four-foot chain link fence on the right-of-way line with some shrubs, I think that'd be a good idea.
Now, we'd be happy to do that, and what would... To facilitate that, we'll move the fence back off the right-of-way line so it sits back behind the right-of-way line and put the shrubs in front of it, so it looks a little more appealing than the fence as it's now proposed.
You were addressing the shade trees, and you were concerned about those because because of the impact on the septic system? I think that's where you were going before.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll do Evan for a second. You don't want trees near septic systems. Roots go in there, they screw them up. If the board says, you know, you need to have six shade trees along the frontage, take the two out of there, put them somewhere else. You don't put trees near septic systems, like you don't, you don't put them on top of dams, because they're going to die, the material's going to rot, it's going to cause a sinkhole. But we just don't do them, keep them away.
Is there a reasonable substitute?
No. They're trees and roots. You don't want trees and roots near a septic system.
That makes sense.
And just so you understand, too, the way the property slopes, it's higher in the back and slopes towards the street. So, again, just like the basin, detention area infiltration basin's located at the lowest part of the site, the septic system's located below grade from the building, so that it's grav, it works by gravity, and we don't have any pumps associated with it. So, again, it wasn't trying to avoid trees, it's just the way the site works best. Thank you for your consideration on that. One of the other issues that came up through the review letters had to do with a buffer between a commercial use and a residential use. As I illustrated, there are, the commercial zone surrounds the property as well as the commercial uses, or there are no uses. This is vacant, the lot to the east is vacant. We certainly have the auto body salvage yard.
Mr. Zalina, I just need to interrupt you. Members, members of the public, believe it or not, members of the public, members of the public, please, the acoustics in here are tough as it is, and your mumblings, believe it or not, filter up, and our court reporters can't hear you, and it makes us, makes it more difficult for us to hear the applicant. Please indulge us. If you need to talk, go outside. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Zalina, you may continue.
Absolutely. I'm very fine with your request.
Thank you. So I was speaking to the buffer requirements for the site. Again, we initially talked about maybe perhaps buffers required along the sides of the property. They don't abut any residential zone or residential uses, so I believe we're all in concurrence that those buffers are no longer required. What we do have is an issue because there are residential properties located across Jackson Mills Road. Perhaps it could be interpreted that a buffer is required there, but again, the septic system, the detention basin, the entrance, and certainly the visual, visual sightlines to the building, we're asking for a waiver of any buffer along Jackson Mills Road.
So, the issue is, from the board's perspective, if I, if I may, and this could hopefully assist you, this is in the neighborhood commercial zone, the other side of the street is residential. By global definition, right, a neighborhood commercial zone talks about types of properties that are supposed to be compatible with a neighborhood feeling. That certainly, you haven't gotten to any of the architecturals yet at all, but that certainly looks as if you've tried to respect that sort of feel from the design of the building itself. As a compromise to your position, and of course, again, this is for the board's thought as well, to the extent you can vision the frontage of your building and the site as if it was a residential structure, you know how if you build a new house, you're going to do all, all this stuff for landscaping, maybe add some color to what you can do, do there, you know, azaleas and things like that, and, you know, I'm not a total horticulturalist, but you understand my point, is to the extent that you can use landscaping, lighting, texture to ensure that the visual impact of the building has a neighborhood residential feel, I think the board would appreciate that.
Mr. York, that's pretty good for a UVA guy, huh?
Also, in keeping with that, the building is residential in scale.
That's what I was saying.
It's a two-story building, but it's basically essentially a single story with a peaked roof on it. The roof, the height to the top of the roof, so I did make point of that.
But I think to answer that question, we will make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible to keep in line with the neighborhood. That's why I said.
You'll submit as for resolution compliance for, for the board professionals' review, some sort of enhanced landscaping plan, planning plan to show that sort of.
Sure. No problem.
Right, but, but again, just like I was saying, keeping with your point, the building itself doesn't look like a monstrous office building or a commercial building, and that it's residential in scale, and you'll see in design, it's peaked roof, it's only 27 feet high to its actual top, so well, well below the permitted height in that zone.
The last item I had, Mr. Zelinski, was, Mr. Zalina, I'm sorry, the, you had a Phase One environmental site assessment that was submitted as part of the application and made reference to a recommendation for a Phase Two environmental assessment. Can you give us an update on, on that?
That was completed, and what that was referring to, there was a prior septic system or cistern issue on the site that has, not only has the Phase Two been done, but the, everything has been removed from the site, and we have a clean, a letter from the DEP stating so.
Could we ask that you submit that to the board after tonight's meeting?
Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, Mr. Peters, just so that we know a little bit more about a Phase Two, you seem to be concerned about it in your miscellaneous number three. What is a Phase Two, and if they're representing that it's been satisfied, what, what is the implication of that? What does it mean to us here today?
Phase One environmental survey is what we might refer to as a bare bones or basic environmental survey. You review available public records, you visit the site. If anything pops up that is not in keeping with norms or standards for that area, whether it's the state, the county, the town, you would then go to a Phase Two, which would be a more specific or more researched study for the site, which is exactly what Mr. Zalina had done. Their Phase One said there used to be a cistern on the site, which weren't regulated when they were probably constructed years and years ago, and so they went to the state and got a letter from the state saying that it was clean. So, process worked. Phase One said, hey, there's something we don't understand. They went and did the Phase Two. They went and got the necessary permit to okay it from the state. They followed the correct procedures, and I think that's covered.
I need, just maybe a little bit more basic. Does the Phase One mean that they have to hire somebody to come out and drill holes in the property, dig sections of the property?
Not in the Phase One.
Not in the Phase One. How about in the Phase Two?
Yes.
So the Phase Two, they're actually doing some type of a physical inspection of the property?
Correct.
And, and Phase Two became up clean, no problems with the Phase Two? No, actually. I'm sorry?
Actually, you know, the Phase One identifies areas of concern, and one of the areas of concern required further investigation, which was the Phase Two study. Once it was identified that there was a former septic system component on the site, it was addressed and removed from the site, so that now in essence, there's a clean site, and the state recognizes it as such by virtue of a no further action letter, or said something, it's another terminology today, but it used to be a no further action letter.
Do you have, do you have an NFA?
Yes.
And, and were you, you got that in your application?
Sure.
And just so the board's clear, part of the reasoning behind that is because banks want it. Before they're going to finance things, they want to see what the Phase Two looks like.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Thank you, Mr. York. Anything else, Mr. Zalina, Mr. Hill?
Nothing else.
So this guy's good to keep us.
I guess we'll hold on to him.
Thank you.
Even though he couldn't get into Lehigh, but we'll hold on to him.
So where are we now?
I was young and.
Where are we with the waivers? Just, I knew you made a statement. So you're going to fix those waivers?
No.
What do you mean, fix?
I don't like them out, but it's.
No, we're still requesting the waivers, but we will work with Mr. Peters as far as providing a better plan for landscaping.
Good, that's, that's one of the waivers.
To mitigate the waivers, right.
See, see?
Fancy word.
Sidewalks.
I think the board needs to tell us. We're happy either.
I'm telling you, I, I want sidewalks. I mean.
If the board wants sidewalks, then the board wants sidewalks.
And you're having patients, not patients, but animals come in with your loved ones, and you want to walk along the sidewalk.
Totally understood.
That's my.
It is of no consequence to the applicant.
We just need to coordinate that with the county. It's a county road, and we'll provide that to them and make sure they have no objection. I don't anticipate that they would, but I just want to, for the record, understand that we can't have, we don't want a conflict between the two, and we'll provide you with whatever documentation and submittals we have to the county, but I'm, I'm saying, I don't expect it, but I just don't want to get put in a corner.
Frank, you comfortable with the parking?
Yeah, I thought, based on the testimony and the calculations, they have adequate parking. I would just add, though, if sidewalk is being constructed along Jackson Mills Road, that the sidewalk that's along the front of the building be extended to meet that. It's a way of a continuous walking path.
Good. That's all I have. So, you got egress and regress, you're happy with it?
Yes, the, the, well, one question from Mr. Zalina. The traffic report said there was adequate site distance. Do you compare, do you agree with that at the site driveway?
Yes, yes, and, and we dealt with the county on that issue as well, and what, what would have been of concern is, is the rise in the topography to the west, and it is adequate, and there were some comments about site triangles as well, but what happens is the stop bar is nearly 20 feet from the travel lane, which facilitates adequate, or site distance, so a site triangle would fall totally within the right-of-way and thus is not required by easement or other delineation.
I would just add that at least the site, sightlines and the site distance be put on the plan as part of a resolution compliance, just so that we have that record.
No problem.
I agree, it's not a site triangle, but at least the sightlines will be shown.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Biskovich. Any further questions, you move forward. Mr. Hurley?
I just have a question on the infiltration basin. You have an emergency spillway, and I presume that's a take care of overflow?
Every basin designed in the state of New Jersey has to provide for some emergency overflow of.
I understand.
Manner, something, some way, if, if something were to fail, or we have a storm that exceeds our calculated storm, we, we have to have a way so that if this basin were to fail.
Well, I understand that, but it looks like from the spillway, it would go to this basin or grate that you have that's in the area to be dedicated to Ocean County. Where does that go from there?
No. The way, the way the topography of the site currently runs, the drainage runs to the property to the east. It doesn't run onto the right-of-way itself. There's a very slight, I don't want to say swell, but depression there, so the, the natural, the current runoff from the site and their flow path runs right in a direction to the east of our property, where our emergency overflow is, is provided. So, we're in keeping with the natural hydrology of the site by, to locate it there. It wouldn't make sense to put it anywhere else, because it would end up there anyway, because that's the way the site currently drains.
You have it listed as CB number three. I assume that's catch basin. Is that what it stands for?
I'm sorry, I, do you say that again?
On the, on the southeast corner of the property, in an area in which it's indicated to be dedicated to Ocean County, I guess. It looks like there's, it says CB number three. What is that?
Oh, catch basin number three.
That's what I asked. Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's a catch basin.
Yes.
Does that connect to something else?
Yes. If you, if you look on, on the plans, there's a small recharge system within the county right-of-way that has been sized to collect the stormwater. We have to, let me back up a step. We're providing for a widening of the road by six feet along our frontage. So, that extra pavement, we, we're required to collect a runoff from, from that extra pavement and dispose of it somehow, and, and Ocean County prefers that we deal with it by virtue of this recharge trench that's located at the very easternmost corner of our property. So that catch basin collects the runoff that runs down the, the side of the road, and then there's, it connects to the infiltration basin located within the Ocean County right-of-way.
Okay, so the owner of the property, the operator of the property will be responsible for the maintenance of the basin?
The on-site basin, not the.
The on-site basin.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Now, the elevation, if I'm reading it correctly, from the base of the, the infiltration basin itself, it looks like 148, and goes as high as 155, so it's about, what, seven feet difference?
Yes.
But on, where that spillway is, it looks like there's only like two feet of.
Exactly. The basin's only permitted to, to contain two feet of water, so the basin's sized appropriately for the, the design storm, so that only two feet of water would, would take, would be maintained in the basin until it infiltrates out. That's according with the, the best management practice, rules of the, of the state.
So, okay, so if we have a, a 100-year storm, I don't know if you'll ever get two feet of water. If it exceeds two, two feet.
Yes.
It's going to flow over, it's going to spill over.
Well, if for some reason the intensity and duration was greater than what we, the rate of which we can percolate it into the ground, you're correct. It would go, that's what the emergency overflow would be for.
So this is what I, what I used to call a retention basin. I don't know if that's true or not. I used to refer to as retention basins and detention basins. Retention, it just goes into the soil, right? Detain, detention, it kind of holds it for a while and discharges it someplace else. So this is an infiltration basin.
Correct.
So the most we can hope for in this area is two feet?
Yes. And understand, the soils on the site are very permeable. It's a sandy soil, so what we're collecting in essence is the impervent, you know, the, the building rooftop and the pavement, parking lot area. We've sized this basin to collect the stormwater and infiltrate it based on the infiltration studies that were done at a rate that would collect the entire 100-year storm and infiltrate it to the ground.
Mr. Hill, we're okay with this, huh? Two feet?
Yes, that is the state BMP requirement, recommendation and standard, so they, they, the basin design is in conformance with the DEP and township ordinance and regulations.
Just out of curiosity, why is it necessary to have seven feet of slope? If the most you're going to get in there is two feet?
Because of the slope of the land. I will, I can refer to my, I could point to it on the board here. There's about, about five-foot change of grade across the detention basin today. So, if, if this elevation is, and I don't know what it is without looking at the plan, but say it's 10, then this is 15. So this is all flat, so if we're two feet deep here, then we're seven feet, or say eight feet, at this corner. So this, this whole basin has to be absolutely flat, and it just, but the topography of the land is a lot higher in that west corner, so it doesn't affect the amount of storage in the basin. It just means that slope is a little bit greater, well, five, six feet greater on that northwest corner than it is on the southeast corner, just to accommodate the, the existing topography.
So the maximum volume of, of the basin itself is two feet by the area?
Yes. But it's a, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the board? Any further questions? Nothing? Professionals, any further comments?
I think we'd like to hear some of the best part of the site and the sign that's proposed.
Definitely. This detail for the site sign is included on the detail sheet for the plans, but since I put it up there, I'll mark it.
Thank you.
As something.
Yes, thank you.
I'll refer to the diagram on, on the, on the wall here. The site identification sign is located, and this is an old plan, it doesn't show, but it's located right over where my dot is on, on the, on the plan right here. It's about 25 feet from the property line. It's a totally conforming sign. It's five and a half feet tall, and it's six by three, 18 feet in, in area. It'll only be limited to two or three colors. It won't exceed the ordinance as it relates to the number of colors that are permitted for the sign, and as you see it, it says Jackson, Jackson Veterinary Hospital, little pet showing with the, the address and phone number on it. Totally conforming, no variances or waivers required for the sign as proposed.
Is it a lit sign?
It is. It is internally illuminated.
Flashing lights, no flashing lights?
No, absolutely not. Solid white, white panel with the dark lettering on it. Come on, Mr. Chairman.
I have no further questions. What members have any further questions? Professionals, any further questions? Counselor, any further testimony?
None from us.
All right. Well, in that case, then I'll close this portion of the hearing, and I'll open it to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this application? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public portion. Any closing comments, Mr.?
Nothing.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, board members, it's hours. Applicants looking for preliminary and final major subdivision approval.
Site plan.
Site plan approval, I'm sorry. He's laid out his requests for some waivers. I think one of the things for consideration that came up by Mr. Magherian was the, was the need for the sidewalk. I think Mr. Biskovich. I think Mr. Miskovich commented that if the sidewalk is out front, it should be connected to the sidewalk going interior. Otherwise, there's some waiver considerations that came up for the shade trees. And also to move the fence back, I believe by the retention basis, put some shrubs up front and a waiver for that buffer. And I believe also some representations to give the overall feel of the premises, residential aesthetic feel. Any thoughts and comments, motion?
You did it perfectly. Please add that to the motion, all right? All those items, Sean, and I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Have a second?
Second.
Go, Paul.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a brief 10-minute break before we start the next application. See you in about 10 minutes, 15 minutes. Thank you. You're here, you're good to go. Everybody's ready, all right. Applicant number two, Joseph Frank, variance 3374. Mr. Frank. Good evening, Mr. Frank.
Mr. Frank, you've raised your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Address 25 Fordham Road, Jackson, New Jersey, 08527.
Mr. Frank, it's the, you have an application, you're seeking a variance, it says for an eight-foot in height solid fence in the front yard area of your corner lot. How can we help you? What is it that you'd like to do?
Yeah, so before I start, I just wanted to say that I was here like a month ago and it was a little upsetting because I was, ended up being here the whole night and I was like, like, wow, this like, sitting here the whole night. And it was a lot of very useful information, but then today I met James Hurley outside and he told me that the entire board is totally all voluntary and volunteers. And I just realized that like, me waiting three hours when you, every single two weeks or twice a month, give over hours every night. And I just want to take that back and I, I just think that the board deserves a round of applause for all they've done for Jackson Township.
All right. That was nice, Mr. Frank. You're buttering this up, but that's okay. Nicely done, nicely done. It's nice to see that someone from the public appreciates what it is that...
I really do, I really do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
So now, first of all, regarding the AFA fence, so just clarity, it's not in the front of the, it's, I guess on the front yard you could say, but it's going along...
You know, Mr. Frank, I'm going to start through the chair. Because we have a new member, it may be beneficial to explain the issue with fences in the front yard or corner lots generally in any event, to whomever.
So I'll try to make this brief. Ernie can, Ernie and Jeff can fill in any blanks, but a corner, corner lots are unique in the sense that they have frontage along two roadways. And a, when you, any frontage along a roadway is considered a front yard, all right, within the ordinance. As such, what might actually be utilized by the homeowner as a side yard, if it has frontage along a roadway, it's still considered a front yard and the front yard setback rules apply or distances apply. So that, that's why this applicant is here. The applicant is proposing to construct a fence within the front yard, which is defined as the, the, the area between the front side of the home and the road itself. Now there, and the ordinance does allow fences within the front yard, but not exceeding four foot and they have to be open. Correct?
Correct.
So in this case, the applicant is proposing an eight-foot solid fence, which in most cases we see six foot, right? But in this case, an eight-foot solid fence in the front yard along the, the frontage of, of the property.
Just to be clear, the, the tallest solid fence you can have in a front yard is 30 inches. The tallest open style fence in a front yard is four feet, meaning open fence, chain link fence. So the, the highest solid fence in a front yard is 30 inches.
Mr. Frank, I'm, I'm taking the survey that's up on the screen. Is the survey of your property?
Yes.
Yes, it is? Okay. And so just that, so that we can understand exactly what it is you want to do, I'm looking at a copy of it and I see circles coming out from the house. So I guess the bottom, oh, the bottom is 40, okay. So I'm looking at from Villanova and I see the circles going along the line to the front corner of the house, all right? Are you proposing where those circles are, that that, you want to put an eight-foot fence there?
Yes, that's the proposed amount, yeah.
So that part you want eight foot. And then as we run along the sidewalk, you have more circles going all the way down, presumably to the end of your property line, and those are all circles. And am I correct to assume that you would like to make that entire stretch of fence eight foot high as well?
Yes, and then the reason for that was mainly I just would want that for the back because like most people have, are in the middle of a street, so no one gets, no one can see their backyard. They're usually a little more private. I mean, like, the, the yard goes up a little bit, going to the back of the, on the first floor, there's the porch, is I would say like, far off three, four feet above the street level. And therefore, with, with a six-foot fence, you'd still be able to see right into my porch. Now, the question is what I'm entitled to, but that's why we're asking for an eight-foot fence, just so we have a little privacy on that porch. Now, we didn't want to do six in the front, it just would look a little strange.
Let me, let me stay with your diagram. Then as we reach the end of your property line on Villanova, coming up against your neighbor, you have more circles there running along the property line. Are you also intending that to be eight foot? Is that your request for an eight-foot fence there as well?
Definitely starting there, yeah.
And then it stops, then the circles stop and then they become little Xs. I don't know how to interpret the little Xs. What are the little Xs supposed to be?
So basically, on my, only copy of my survey, when I went to the Jackson Township, when they were showing me what I was legally entitled to without variance, just with my basic permit, they told me that that X is over there would be all I'm allowed to do before going to variance. So they just made that marking on my only copy.
All right, so you didn't write the Xs in?
No.
You don't intend the fence to be there?
No.
You just want to run the eight-foot fence up to that point where the last circle is and then stop?
There's a, well, that's the real question. There's a, there's already a fence there in my backyard over there. I'm not sure what I want to do over there yet because I'd rather, there is someone moving in in a few months, I'd rather split the pay with him and like, figure that out before I... Yes, I didn't put that in the survey. I don't know if I even need that for a variance though. So I didn't put that in.
All right, so right now, I'm taking your request is that you would be stopping there with your eight-foot fence and then connecting to a fence that's already in the backyard, correct?
Yeah.
So let's keep following along the back of your property line, go, go, we go all the way across and then we're going to make a, a left turn and we're going to follow that up and then we come to more circles. So I see the more circles. Are you proposing an eight-foot fence there as well? So now, so now it's be on the Fordham side. So I'm now looking at, from Fordham Street, I'm looking straight at the house, looking at the left side and I'm seeing some circles coming out from the side.
Yeah, also over there would connect to a fence that's already there also. It's eight feet high, the fence on the other property, which starts by where, by dots end because their property is like a few feet higher.
I, I, you phased in and out a little bit with my...
Sorry. Yes, an eight-foot fence over there from the, by the, right next to the driveway for those 10 feet and then straight back till I hit the fence of the other property or in my backyard.
So everywhere where we see circles in this particular survey is, is referencing and representing where you want to put an eight-foot fence?
Yes.
Okay. Next question I have for you, this survey, is this your survey or is this a survey of a prior owner? Because I don't see your name on it and I don't see that this survey was certified to you. Can you tell me the origins of the survey?
Yeah, I got it from the owners that owned it before me.
Okay. So as we're looking at, at this survey, we see a house, this says a proposed deck on it. I take it that proposed deck, is that deck, that deck is now there?
That is there.
All right. All right. So do you have any other testimony to offer to support your, your request to go from what is traditional of a six-foot fence to an eight-foot fence? And let me tell you why I ask you that, Mr. Frank. I, I went out to your property and I took a look and, and we've heard and seen a lot of applications for fencing. And rare, if ever, have we seen one for an eight-foot fence. And so when I went out to your property to take a look, I saw a little bit of the slope in your property, I saw the deck, I saw the proximity of your neighbor and your neighbor's driveway to where your proposed eight-foot fence is. And so a couple of thoughts came to my mind, some concerns. I'm going to tell you what my concerns are. One, as soon as we go from a six-foot to an eight-foot fence, the whole feel of the neighborhood, the whole aesthetic of the neighborhood, the whole character of the neighborhood changes in my concern. It's my concern, it changes. It takes on the feeling and the aesthetic of the compound as opposed to a residential area where you have a six-foot vinyl fence. So all of a sudden, the whole thing changes, the dynamic changes because you go on these extra two feet. So I'm thinking in the scheme of things, that extra two feet, is that really in the public benefit as a whole to grant that and to change the aesthetic and dynamic of the, of the town? That's a concern for me. Now, other board members, well, they're going to have their concern as well. And so, you know, I'm just kind of throwing it back to you a little bit to think, you know, in, in the scheme of things, wouldn't it be, would it be best or can you reconsider to keep, to keep it consistent with what is elsewhere in your neighborhood? Six-foot fences, six-foot fences everywhere. So that's one concern that I have. The other is that the proposal for your fence is right on that sidewalk, all right? I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm, and I'm looking at where your circles are and I'm interpreting that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you want to put the fence right up against the sidewalk. And that's also, you know, an aesthetic and I think also a potential safety issue to have the fence so close to a sidewalk. Can't say in every instance, but traditionally we're looking to have the fences in a little bit off that sidewalk for bicycle riders, for walkers, you know, there's a safety component that comes with that. So I'm, I'm not enamored too much with having a fence right on the sidewalk. So those are some of my concerns. I mean, do you have any thoughts? Is there any, is there any room in there maybe to move the fence in a little bit and maybe go from an eight to a six?
Yeah, so basically, when I was putting in the, my, for the variance, I was just doing something that it was a little, um, was selfish. It was something basically what I wanted. I totally understand that I'm not entitled to my rights and I am in a township. That was just, yeah, it was just based on what would be the most, what would be the most, the best case scenario for me. But I definitely can adjust to what's allowed and I, yeah, I, I'm totally fine with that.
Mr. Peters? Mr. Hill?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted to sort of piggyback on, on what your, your physical planning examination of the neighborhood was. I too, just because of the size of the fence, I did a, a little homework. I went out in that, that neighborhood and didn't find any eight-foot fences. I could be, I would stand corrected if someone showed me one. Because it was a solid fence, I went back to our year-end reports to try to figure out. I don't think we have an eight-foot solid fence variance. So I, I really do think that from a physical planning perspective, as you've pointed out, without the applicant giving us a reason other than respectfully they want it, I don't see a, a public purpose put forward to having an eight-foot fence. If someone came back and said, you know what, Mr. Jones and Mrs. Smith, and you know, that's the way fences are getting built nowadays and that's, but I just, from a physical planning perspective or a practical perspective, I, I don't know where we've installed eight-foot high solid fences in residential areas in Jackson Township. And quite frankly, I think in order to accomplish the proofs that are necessary to exceed that threshold for the board to grant that relief, we'd have to have more affirmative testimony that that's something that has been done or is a norm or, otherwise unfortunately the, I just want it because I want eight foot, I'm not sure that carries the day, so to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
So, Mr. Frank, you said this wiggle rule, right? Wiggle rule, we got it?
Yes.
So it would be acceptable to you to go for the six-foot fence?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to come off the property line as the chairman has suggested. Evan, would you have a recommendation in regards to the location so everybody's happy and he's happy?
Yeah, so I think, and I think, look, I'm, I'm a proponent of consistency amongst the board on similar type of applications. In, in, in applications like this where the lots are smaller, but the board's sympathetic to, to safety and the family and so on, where they grant variances, the, the applicants have generally agreed to move the fence off the property line and more so off the, off the sidewalk, all right? That's just, that's basically, that's been the board's preference and that's what most applicants have agreed to in the past. Especially because, and, and this applies in your case as well, your neighbor's driveway is about eight feet off of the back of your property line, which means if they're pull, if they're backing out of their driveway and they stop at the edge of the driveway and the road, they can't see past your fence. They can't see people walking on the sidewalk. So we ask, we've asked people and people have agreed to move that fence off of the sidewalk, all right? In your case, it would be probably about another three to four feet. That gives 12 foot between the edge of pavement and where somebody's eye would be and where that fence corner would be. And that's usually adequate enough where if they come to a complete stop, they can see beyond the fence and see people on the sidewalk, right? Anything shorter than that, the person would have to be inching out and inching out, kind of, not knowing what they're going to see, not knowing if a bicycle's going to come past, right? And so on. So that's why this board and most applicants, when they, when they realize that, they agree. We're right, we don't want to create a safety issue for our neighbors or our own kids if they're riding their bicycles. So the fence should be located, in this case, I would say at least four feet off the sidewalk and that gives 12 feet from the edge of pavement in this case, which is consistent with what the board has asked for and, and accepted in the past.
Are you suggesting, are you suggesting four feet from the, from the sidewalk? So he comes in four feet from the sidewalk and then runs parallel all the way down? Is that...
I would say where he, where the plan currently depicts fencing on the property line, which is right along the edge of the sidewalk along Villanova, that that fence be moved in towards the house away from the road and property line by four feet. So therefore, four feet off the sidewalk.
Just clarity, four feet from the sidewalk, meaning it's four feet away from his, four more feet away from his driveway or we're going on...
No, four, four feet off. So your property line is right on the sidewalk along Villanova, Villanova?
Yeah.
Right? So instead of being, instead of the fence being right on the property line, four feet off the property line, along Villanova.
But the back would go along the fence? That would be fine?
The fence would be no closer than four feet to your property line along Villanova, Villanova. Does that make more sense?
Yes.
It'd be entirely four feet off of that property line, right? Corner, both corners and so on. Your rear fence is along the rear property line. That's fine, that's, that's fine. That's not the issue.
So you mentioned three or four feet, so that's, it's three or four?
No, he said four. No, four. In your case, four. Historically, depending on the measurements that we've seen, it's, the board has asked from anywhere, on average, three to four feet beyond. That gives a 12-foot distance. So in, in some cases it's nine foot, you're dealing with eight. So... So in your case, it's, it really comes down to what's the total? So it's 12 foot off of the edge of pavement.
Where is the 12 feet?
Off of the edge of pavement. The street.
Oh, meaning eight feet from the sidewalk through the?
Right now, right now, your property line is approximately eight feet off of the edge of pavement.
Yeah, I understand now.
Okay.
Great.
Any further questions from the board?
Hi. After the, on the, you know, you're across the path, you're not in the neighborhood. So you said you wanted to get in the line? Are you saying that you're going to, so what are you making this? I didn't understand what you're making of that.
I'll keep it at four feet. Yeah, because that's already, there's trees there, they have trees along, if you've seen the property, there's already from like six feet already back across till the gate, there's trees like 15 feet high. So I would just put the fence along that until the smaller gate. The smaller gate is not really noticeable from the street. So for aesthetic purposes, I want to connect the now six-foot fence along the back, but once it gets to there, it's not really noticeable anymore. But connecting it, I would keep the same fence. So it'd be a six-foot fence from the back until the new fence, the fence is already there.
So arguably, and correct me if I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, arguably, from the point that the chairman indicated where those Xs were drawn by somebody or staff heading towards Lot 3, that, so long as the fence is conforming, it's not in a corner lot, correct? So, so what the board would have jurisdiction over is to ensure that there's a seamless, aesthetically pleasing connection between the portion of the fence that requires a variance with the portion that may not. That the board could do, doesn't have to. And I think that's, you're, that's, that's the condition you would ask to see. And that makes sense, because you don't want juxtaposition, you don't want some, some six-foot them bouncing and doing whatever. So do you understand, what I'm saying, what we're saying is, should the board act favorably on your application and permit you to construct a six-foot solid fence in the front yards of these corner lots, one of the conditions would be, should you complete the back of the, of the fence from the property line, from where those Xs were drawn toward Lot 3, you have to make sure that they're, that they match, that they're aesthetically pleasing and they match.
Yes, it can be the same one until those Xs, for sure, yeah. The same exact fence all around the whole thing will go until those Xs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, is everything understandable, Mr. Frank?
Yes, very clear.
Good. So, so any other questions from the board, from the Frank? So, Mr. Frank, if I understand it correctly, you're modifying your application, if I understand you correctly. And instead of seeking an eight-foot fence, you're seeking a six-foot fence and permission to put that fence in as you indicated in your drawing, but it would be four feet off the sidewalk.
Yes. Just one question.
Sure.
I don't know if I'll do this and I'm out, hopefully the person that's making the fence will know how to make a straight line, but if there's, can I go on a slant from four to three feet after any period of space?
You can go from four to five, but not from four to three.
I'm saying past like a certain amount of space.
You can increase the intensity of the variance. So you could go to five feet, but you can't go to three.
No, just the reason usually three is allowed if it's not a corner lot. Sorry, if it's not connected to a driveway. So I was wondering if it's like 20?
Three feet height, you mean?
No, three feet off.
No, you're misinterpreting what I had said. Don't, for your own, for your, in order to move forward, you should probably just agree with the four foot.
Agreed. I should quit while I'm ahead?
Any further testimony, Mr. Frank?
No.
Board members, any further questions? Nothing, professionals, nothing, all right. Then I'm going to close this session. I'm going to open it to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to be heard on this application? Not seeing anybody come forth, I'm going to close the public session. Any further comments, closing comments? All right, board members, it's ours. Any deliberations or a motion?
I'll make that motion, I'll leave everything that was stated.
And the reason that it was stated is because this particular application, right, as amended, would it, would it, this, the deviation does in fact create benefits that substantially outweigh any detriment, based on the amendments that he's presented.
Beautiful. So we're going to go with the solid six-foot fence, four feet off the property line?
Along Villanova?
Along Villanova.
With the fence to be consistent aesthetically with the balance of the property.
Exactly.
Can we clarify, can we clarify, four feet from, it's four feet from the edge of the sidewalk?
Yes.
The edge closest to the house?
The inside.
Right?
We'll put that in the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Long call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. DeJarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Frank, congratulations.
Thank you so much, have a wonderful evening, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, not formally. So why don't we call him up now? Isn't that, isn't that, no, isn't that Adams? No, but isn't that, Mr. Pfeffer, may I ask a question? You're Miles 2, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Through the chairman, just we can do something administratively. Sorry, that's a bad word tonight.
Very bad word.
Deal with applications. So while Mr. Pfeffer's coming up, the board had received a request to carry this matter. They had hoped to carry the matter to September 1st. The board has made, and I will say this, an administrative determination to only have C variances on that night. There's no meeting on the 15th that you and I had discussed. There is a meeting September 29th, which is also not good. So then, would you consent to, I'm pulling up the date, I apologize.
I think the October meetings are the 16th or the 20th? Oh, 6, I'm sorry.
6 or 20, yep.
Yep.
I'll take the 6.
So, thank you, just to clear it up, as we didn't address it yet. So, members of the board, members of the public, application number five, Miles 2 LLC, requesting a preliminary and final site plan with use variance, Block 2603, Lot 18, on 470 West Commonwealth Boulevard. That matter shall be carried to the October 6, 2021, meeting. Without the requirement of further notice, the applicant has waived time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pfeffer.
I'm still here.
You're still here. All right, next up is application number three, Kristen Quenka, variance 3368. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I respect your request, you may refer to your presentation.
Please do, yes, thank you.
And I can make, as she's doing that, I can make a representation to the board that you will very much be appreciative of the presentation that this particular attorney puts together. She knows how to make it work. I almost guarantee it. Haven't been, haven't seen it before in action. Do you have copies of it, hard copies for the board too? Why don't you, so we use some time, I'm going to direct you a little bit. Can someone pass them out? Thank you. So to the other professionals in the room, I'm going to say this because the board's been debating, I'm going to use this, we're sort of off the record, but sort of on. Please pay attention to how this presentation is made because the board is very much appreciative of how this is done, both from the PowerPoint and the fact that the copies of the PowerPoint are made for the board.
Pressure's on now.
Very easy, follow right along, it's all right here. She does a good job. She's in front of my other board. Sorry to put a little pressure on you. I'm sure not. To John Jackson's credit, for at least two years, from what I saw, you know, I'm not there day to day, she knew, shadowed him. And it was her idea to start doing like this because, you know, she's young, but she knows. To his credit, he wrote into it, to also, from a business standpoint, I could fairly still, whatever their economics are, they considered doing it. And she's gotten very good. Again, and by the way, she's asked it from the point of, so that's what I'm seeing the most, is another person doing it. It's always nice to see somebody who always tries to get better and stuff like that. Jillian. Jillian McClear. So I could tease him and say, you know, it's time for John's name to come off, but I won't do that. Why did not work? See, Peter would have liked, Peter wanted this more.
Yeah, all the time.
No.
And if they give us something else, we can appear to.
But now it's not working. So where she was in Smore, I should have set up during the break, left it there.
Warming up to the task.
We're going to see heart movements?
So I'll take away a little bit. Did you also happen to have the opportunity to send these in to, do we have those too so we can put them up for screening for the public?
The PowerPoint presentation, no, is not.
All right.
But it's really just, we'll be, you know, submit a plan.
And so do we have those plans on? Oh, we do, okay. You're going to have to hold the mic.
Yes, of course.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jillian McClear. I'm here tonight from King, Kittredge, Jackson, McQueenian Wells, on behalf of my clients, Diana Cobos and Christian Quenka, who are here tonight with us in the audience. I also have with us tonight our engineer, Mr. Stuart Shaloner, and our architect, Mr. Kurt Ludwig. We're here tonight before the board because Mr. and Mrs. Quenka purchased a piece of property here in Jackson a couple of months ago with the hopes of building their dream home here to raise their children at. The property is located at 440 Freehold Road and it's presently a vacant lot that was created by a subdivision map that was filed back around the year 1990. It's an undersized lot, which is why we're here tonight before the board and it has quite a strange geometry to it, as you can see from the tax map up here. You can see that actually the surrounding lots are also all flag lots as well and all these lots were created under the same subdivision back in the 90s. I'd like to reiterate again that the applicants are so excited to be here tonight. I've been working with them through this whole process, through purchasing the lot, you know, correspondences with Mr. Shaloner and Mr. Ludwig. They're super excited, they're really hoping to build their dream home on this lot. They have a couple of young children, you'll hear from them in a moment. They are looking to make Jackson their forever home here.
So if I may, just as you're flipping through, will Marcus A1, the 15-page PowerPoint presentation?
That would be great, thank you very much. And without further ado, I'd like to, before I have our professionals called up, I'd like to ask Mr. Quenka and Ms. Cobos to come up and say a few words.
Why don't you lead them to this mic?
Good evening.
Good evening, folks.
Each raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
I swear.
Thank you. If each of you can give us your full names, spelling your last, and then we'll turn it through to the chair.
Diana Cobos, for, you said address as well?
We know it's, yeah, go ahead.
448 Baker Place, Betham, New Jersey, 08861.
Christian Quenka, 448 Baker Place, Betham, New Jersey, 08861.
Thank you, good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Mr. McClear, there are your witnesses.
Thank you very much. Mr. and Mrs. Quenka, you just purchased this lot here at 440 Freehold earlier this year, correct?
Yes.
And it is your intent to build, I think what you described to me as your dream home, your forever home on this lot, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And you have been working for some time now with Mr. Shaloner and Mr. Ludwig in designing your home and making sure that, you know, it really is the perfect home for you, is that right?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And you do have young children, if I recall?
We have two, a nine-year-old and a nine-month-old.
Nine-month-old boy.
Yes.
Okay. And if you could for me, just tell the board briefly a little bit about why Jackson is where you'd like to settle down and raise your children.
Well, I truly believe that Jackson Township, it's a great town to raise up your kids. That's why I decided to build my dream home here in this beautiful, amazing town. That's all I can tell.
We also have our brother-in-law, his brother actually purchased a home a couple of months ago as well and he's already residing here, he's got his four kids and we love it so much that we already spent. And we love it so much that we already spent, about, what, a week ago? We spent with them the whole time because they, my daughter enjoys the pool, enjoys the town. They're able to go out and hang out, basically. And where we live, currently live right now, it's not possible. It's a lot of chaos. We live in Perthamboy, so there's a lot of, the neighborhood is very crowded.
It's different.
It's a lot of, a lot of difference.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Quenka at this time?
Any questions of the applicants?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to now call my first, or my second witness and our first professional, Mr. Stuart Chaloner.
Very well. Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, and comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation? And through the chair, he'll briefly vordere you regarding your qualifications.
Okay. Good evening, board members. My name is Stuart Challoner, C-H-A-L-L-O-N-E-R. My address is 201 Main Street, Tom's River. I practice an engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 1989. I appeared in front of this board, probably more than, I've been practicing as an engineer. I've been licensed, you know, since 1989. I've owned my own practice since 1995. I'm in front of Jackson probably more than 50 times, so.
Your credentials are accepted. Just for the record, are you testifying as an engineer, a planner, or both?
Both.
Both, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Chaloner, can you please take the board through your plot plan, pointing out the variance relief that we need?
So the property in question is a, approximately a two-and-a-half-acre wooded lot. It's a flag lot that was created back in 1990. It was part of a minor subdivision that a landlord or came in front of this board and received variances for lots that had insufficient lot width and created flag lots. Most of the lots have already been built on. This is a remaining vacant lot. It is the lot that's the most furthest uphill. It's adjacent to an adjoining residential development on Overlook Drive, which is just beyond us. And the surrounding lots adjacent to us and towards the, towards the front end street are also flag lots. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 12-foot-wide driveway along the entire length of the property to access the rear portion of the property. The property has a great change in topography, approximately 40-foot change from the front end road to where the house would be. So there'll be some grading performed for the new driveway. And then at the top of the property, the applicant is proposing his new two-story framed dwelling. The property would be serviced by an individual septic disposal system. And because of the length of the driveway being approximately over 1,000 feet, we're also proposing to put a irrigate, or a public or potable well service.
Say that again, please.
Potable well. We're going to put a well in the, into, for the service of the water. So it'll be serviced by well and septic. The plan in front of you has a layout of the proposed dwelling that we're proposing. It also has a proposed swimming pool. And it shows you where the, where the anticipated underground individual disposal system will be installed.
Can you please just briefly go through our, the actual bulk variances we're looking for? And also, I know we've had discussions with the applicant just tonight. There might be some changes, if we can go through that.
So the lot itself, irregardless of the proposal of the construction, the lot itself requires variances because it's an undersized lot. Since the property was subdivided in 1990 and created, the lot has been changed to a new zoning that requires approximately three-acre zoning. I'll give you the exact. 130,000 square foot is required. The applicant currently has 105,000 square foot. The minimum lot width in the zone, in the R3 zone, is 200 feet. The applicant has a 51-foot frontage along the highway. So it requires a lot width variance. The property has a lot frontage variance. 100-foot is required. Again, it has 51-foot on the highway, so variance is required for a lot frontage. Lot depth, there's a 400-foot lot depth. And even though the property's over 1,200-foot deep, the, where it's measured is where the house is. And that's 271 square foot in depth. So it requires a lot depth requirement, according to today's zoning. The proposal that was submitted to the board also had identified some variances based on the setback requirements, the bulk setback requirements for the construction of the home or the building envelope. The house was originally laid out using the zoning that was approved in 1990 and shown on the, on the final plaque. We met with the applicant tonight. And the applicant can revise the plan to meet all the bulk requirements in terms of the setbacks. So if I'll go through the variances, the front yard setback, there's an 80-foot front yard setback. The applicant was always compliant with a 94-foot setback. The zoning requires a 50-foot rear yard setback. He's providing 71 square foot. The minimum side yard setback is 50-foot. The applicant was proposing a 21, almost 22, square foot. You can see it on the eastern portion of the property. The applicant will be able to meet that requirement. Will slide that in to make it a 50-foot requirement. So that variance will be eliminated. He is proposing to conform to the building height. And the max building coverage is 15%. The proposed dwelling is only 4.4%. So he is compliant there. And then there was two variances that were called out for the pool. And the applicant agreed that we'll reduce the size of the pool to meet the setback requirements for the pool. So the only variances that we're going to seek in front of the board tonight is for the specific variances required because of the undersized lot. All the bulk requirements for the placement of the home and pool will be compliant to the zoning.
All right. I was trying to keep score.
Okay.
So I'm looking at Mr. Peters' letter. That's what I was trying to follow.
I'm doing, I'm doing the same thing.
You're doing the same thing, okay.
I am.
So you still need the variance for the minimum lot area?
Correct.
Still need the variance for the minimum lot width?
Correct.
As I flip the page, you still need the variance for the minimum lot frontage?
Correct.
And the minimum lot depth?
That is correct.
But the last three, the minimum side yard setback, you can now conform. And on the minimum rear yard and the minimum side yard, you're now going to conform to those, so those are out.
That is correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Now, in your opinion, will the layout that's proposed of this dwelling and the associated improvements secure the residents of this house and the surrounding neighbors from fire, flood, panic, other natural disasters?
Correct. The plan that was presented tonight is a, is a plan for the variance application. If the board deems that this property is a buildable lot, then the applicant receives the variance. And we will be revising the plan to meet the conditions that we just stipulated tonight. And we'll provide a full engineered plans. The plans, even though they're engineered, they haven't been in front of the Ocean County Health Department yet for the, for the septic design because of the, because it requires a variance for the buildable lot. But once that happens, then the township will get a full-blown engineering plans. And we'll demonstrate, because it's over an acre of disturbance, we have to meet the stormwater requirements. So there'll be a stormwater report, maintenance reports. Septic designs will be a full engineered drawings that will be submitted to your engineering department as part of a building application.
Going for a moment to the review letters that came in on this file.
Yes.
Can we agree to everything in the review letter? Is there anything that'll be an issue in there?
Yeah, the only, the only item, I think, that was brought up was the, whether or not there was water available. We're going to seek that with the town. If the township does have water that wants the applicant to bring up into the property, he will bring potable water, public water to the property. But we're still going to install the well.
Which letter, which letter was that?
This is the July 12th letter, Mr. Chairman. From, let's see here, Mr. Peters.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and the applicant will meet all the other conditions of the letter.
And just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Presuming water is available, you'll, again, you'll tie into the public water, but you still want to put a well in for irrigation and other.
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Chaloner, now putting on your, your planning hat for a moment. I would ask that you just, you know, speak to the board about, you know, your feelings as to the C1 and C2 variances.
So the fact that this board created the flag lot in 1990, and it is an irregular-shaped lot, I mean, by nature, a flag lot has a very minimal frontage on, on the roadway. And it allows these oversized lots that were, to be developed into multiple lots. At the time, it was conforming in area when it was subdivided. When the property, when the township rezoned this to R3 zone, it made this a non-conforming lot. But it always had the lot width variance. Even when it was subdivided in 1990, it still, it received a variance for the lot width to allow the 50-foot. I think at that time, it was a 100-foot lot width requirement. So the irregular-shaped lot, the board would have an opportunity to grant the C1 variance for this because obviously it is an irregular-shaped lot, it's a flag lot. The shape of the property, there's, all the develop, all the properties are developed around us. We did send out notices to the adjoining property owners to see if we could purchase any additional properties to make our lot conforming. However, we're only 51-foot for the lot width. And to meet the requirement of the 200-foot, again, the adjoining lots are already, are developed. The board will also have the opportunity to grant this as a C2 variance because it is, in fact, keeping with the neighborhood since all the adjoining lots were divided, were created as flag lots. They're all similar lots to this. Keep it in the neighborhood, we would build a very similar home to what is being developed, has been developed that surrounds us. So the board would also have the opportunity to grant it as a C2 variance.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Have you introduced the heating element? Where would you look with that, oil or propane? What are you thinking?
Well, the applicant actually is the heating guy, maybe who, you know, what we were. What would you, what would, what would be the type of the heating?
Oh, natural, natural gas? I remember the, natural gas has been very expensive. I actually, I actually.
Of course, yes.
I actually did my research. I called in the gas company in charge of Jackson Township. I talked to the salesman. And he said, actually, they can do gas on the property, natural gas, bring up to 700 feet. And after that, it will be paid out of my pocket, which I told him, I don't have a problem with that.
So, don't you look into it? I did want to get your.
No, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Actually, I was telling him the driveway was so long. So when he first came in, I said, 1,200-foot, that's a long driveway. But he was looking forward to it, so.
Mr. Peters, if you, if you will. Some, there's some testimony from the planner regarding the C1 versus the C2 approach to this. Would you elaborate on that? And is there a plus or a minus to doing that evaluation? And how we should consider it?
Well, this is, as Mr. Chaloner indicated, a lot of record. Which is that at some point in time previously, an applicant appeared before a board and the board approved the lot, with or without variances. The problem they have now is, all these years later, master plan revisions and zoning revisions have changed the zoning. I believe this property was in the R1 zone when it was originally approved in 1990. And now is in the R3 zone. So while it is a legal lot, it's platted, someone's paying taxes on it, even though it's undeveloped. In order to build on the lot, you have to follow the new setback requirements. The applicant's original presentation required the three variances that they've indicated they're not going to do anymore. So at this point in time, the only variances that are necessary are what we might refer to as pre-existing, non-conforming variances. Because the lot already exists. So their requirement, and I'll stand corrected if Ms. McClear or Mr. Gertner want to correct me. Their requirement is to provide buy-sell letters to neighbors to see if they can address the deficiency by either acquiring additional property or selling the property to someone else. I heard they sent letters out, I didn't hear what happened with that. But they're not requesting any new variances, something that they are creating the hardship for. The hardship runs with the land because the town changed the zoning requirements.
So we actually have an option of evaluating this application either by virtue of the C1 analysis or the C2 analysis? We're not bound to do one or the other?
I don't believe so. And I would ask if the applicant had chosen, I mean, I think he indicated that it was a flag lot, so it's irregularly shaped. There's a lot of topography on the site. There's got to be 30, 40, 50-foot of grade change on the site. I wouldn't want to have to shovel a driveway.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Hurley?
I did hear you say something about trying to acquire property, is that correct?
We said that as part of the application, typically for undersized lots, it's almost automatic that you send out notices to the adjoining property owners to see if there's any additional properties. Again, we didn't expect that we would get a notice back that someone would be willing to sell 150 feet of their frontage. Since our adjoining lots don't have 150-foot of frontage either, if you looked at the, at the tax map, you can see that the two adjoining lots with a, both have 51 or 50-foot frontage. Because they're flag lots also, they don't widen out, so.
Are they improved?
Yes, they're approved and improved.
Not approved, improved.
Yes, yes, there's houses there, that's correct.
So the only variances that you are requesting are those which are currently existing?
Pre-existing variances.
What you're proposing creates no other variance?
That's correct. We, after, we were just thinking tonight, we would just eliminate those variances. The lot's big enough to make it conforming.
Any further word? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to call Mr. Kurt Ludwig, our architect.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
And could you kindly, sorry, give us your full name, spell your last, and your credentials through the chair?
Sure, thank you. Kurt J. Ludwig, L-U-D-W-I-G, licensed architect in New Jersey since 1991. I attended Arizona State University where I received my degree. I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects and National Council of Architectural Registration Boards. I've testified in numerous municipalities around the state. I've done a lot of work in Jackson, but I, I have not been in front of this board.
Your qualifications are accepted, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Good evening, Mr. Ludwig.
Good evening.
Please take the board through your architectural plans.
Sure. The, the board that you have up on the screen now, my office prepared the design and the drawings for. This board indicates the front elevation and the right-side elevation. The house is a two-story wood frame structure, designed on a basement construction, hip-style roof. The exterior materials will be stucco. And the roofing shingles will be a terracotta-type look. On the front elevation, you can see the main entry in the center. Two-car garage to the right. You'll see on the, on the front and the rear elevation, areas where the glass is two stories high. That represents areas in the house where the first floor goes up to the second floor ceiling. The drawing on the bottom is the right-side elevation, where you can see a rear deck on the right side of the drawing. If you could go to the next page, please, thanks. This page has the rear elevation. Again, you can see the two-story glass areas. That part of the house is the kitchen great room area, which is a two-story space. Open that onto the deck. And then the drawing on the bottom is the left-side elevation. Again, you can see the, the proposed deck on the left side of the drawing.
And we just heard testimony from our engineer that we're actually going to make sure that no setback variances are necessary after all. And do you agree that you'll be able to work with that?
Yes.
You know, and make sure that that happens?
Correct. Correct.
Great. And just to confirm, the, the height of the house will be meeting the ordinance height requirement?
That's true, correct.
Okay. And in your opinion, Mr. Ludwig, does the design of this home promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques?
Yes. As you can see, the house has a Mediterranean, Spanish style to it. We spent a lot of time with the clients, creating and inviting warm home. The inside is a very open floor plan, a lot of living space, the basement is finished. If you could go to the next page, I could walk you through some of the floor plans, thanks. This is a basement plan, shows a recreation area, media area, gym. A lot of the area to the right is unfinished, that would be a utility space. The house is designed with an elevator, that you can see the box in the center of the floor plan, with a stairwell up to the second, or up to the first and second floor. If you could go to the next screen, please, thanks. So, this is the first floor plan. The center of the floor plan is the main entry, where we have a formal dining room to the right, and our open floor plan in the back with the great room and the kitchen. The dining room, foyer, and rear great room and kitchen are two stories high, as I mentioned. To the left is a formal dining room, or, I'm sorry, a formal living room with a bathroom, you can see the elevator. And then to the right is the two-car garage, where from that point, you can enter the pantry, mudroom area, and then there's a study in the back right corner. If you could go to the next page, thanks. This is the second floor. The ex-dat areas are the two-story spaces, you can see the stairwell to the left of the lower two-story space. The left wing is the master suite, where we have the bedroom, master bathroom, walk-in closets, and then on the right side, we have three bedrooms with bathrooms and a laundry room. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Now, how many square feet?
The total square foot?
Including the basement?
Including the basement, okay. Can you give me a second on that? I wasn't prepared for the basement question. Are you looking for the footprint, like, including the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
Total square footage.
You got it, thanks. So, the total square footage of the first and second floor is 7,000, with the garage, Now, that does not count the two-story spaces. That count, that's the living space and the garage.
How many car, how many car garage?
Two-car garage.
And how many bedrooms total in the house?
Four.
I'd like you to elaborate a little bit more on the basement.
Well, you can give the square footage of the basement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Would you mind going back to the...
First floor plan?
Sure.
That's what I, I was thinking the same thing. Basically. What's your thought?
So, the basement square footage is about 3,600 square feet.
Now, have you anticipated the water tables in this area? Have you done boreholes?
I have not.
Did you ever do boreholes so they could put a basement in here?
Uh, we haven't yet, but, uh, we could have thought that probably... You need the, you need the mic.
Oh, sorry.
No, we haven't yet. We gave you a preliminary, but the property is approximately 40 feet higher than the road. I would not expect it to be a problem. I mean, we are built...
Do you want to have any thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, we're building it like on the top of the mountain, so it's, but yes, I mean...
You're building your dream home, I didn't want to have any...
Absolutely. Before, like I said, if, if he gets a variance for the undersized lot, then we, the application will be submitted to the health department and the town for full building, engineered plans.
So, with everything incorporated, with the basement incorporated, what's the total square footage?
11,000.
Eleven thousand?
That sounds, it sounds about right. It would be about 11,000, but I'll tell you.
That's going to be pretty close to that.
But it's four bedrooms, so with the length of the driveway and a two-car garage, it meets RSIS standards.
I want to come back to the basement, but you...
It would be a...
Couple of questions. One, is there, there's no intention now, at least that I can tell by viewing the basement plan, nor in the future, to turn any portion of the basement into bedrooms, is that correct?
That's correct.
The, in terms of access, now, I'm not an architect, I have a hard time reading these plans, but in terms of access to the basement, is it all access that's internal to the house? There's no external access to this basement, no doors to the basement?
That's correct.
And that's the intention, the way it's going to stay? Is that the idea?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay. You said, there's a large portion in the basement that you call the mechanical room, or maybe it's obvious to you, but it's not so obvious to me. What's the mechanical room? What does that mean?
It's basically an unfinished part of the basement where they'll have their heating and cooling system, their hot water heater.
And storage, I suppose, that kind of thing?
Storage, yes.
That portion is unfinished?
Correct.
All right. Then, then there's a section here, another large section, it says unexcavated or...
That's the garage.
That's the garage?
That's the garage, correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have a media room, a stair hall, a recreation room, and then a gym, and an elevator in the middle. And, uh, that's, that's it.
Correct.
Oh, wait a minute, I do see something. I see a bathroom. Is there a bathroom down there?
Yes, there's a two, there's a powder room, two-piece bathroom. I'm sorry, I didn't put, there's, yeah, there's a, there's a powder room, there's a little sitting area, there's a TV area, then the gym, elevator.
So, I see one bathroom, but I don't see a shower. There's no shower down there?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. We're not in the elevator, it's far away to the, I don't know if we have a question regarding the public, what would you use color? Is there a base in that, like, elevator, or a base tower?
Yeah, in, in Brooklyn. I'll, I'll have a match up here. You're welcome. Any further questions of Mr. Ludwig?
Yes. Mr. Ludwig, I'm, I'm a little confused on, on your basement level. The same question the chairman asked, it says unexcavated.
Okay.
You said that's the, you said that's the garage.
But that, that designates, that's a term used on, on architectural plans for the area below, like, a slab at grade? So, above that is the slab of the garage?
Well, it says concrete slab above.
Right.
What's below the concrete slab?
So, the, the four, that four-inch concrete slab will be the garage floor, and underneath that is the existing earth.
Okay, so it's just sitting on the, sitting on existing earth?
Exactly.
We don't have anything below this?
Nothing.
Okay. With reference to the, the study room?
Okay.
I guess I should ask this of the owner, or council. Is there any intent to have a home occupation here?
Excuse me, say it again?
Is there any intent on your part to run a business from this location?
Oh, no, no business, it's personal, it's for my family. It's my dream home that I want to build, there's no business intent here.
And you understand that this is for a single-family home?
That is correct.
For a single-family?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What members, any other questions? I mean, of the, of the architect, nothing further? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Ms. McClair?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just in closing, this applicant is, you've, you've heard from Mr. Quenka and Ms. Cobos, they're looking to build their dream home here in Jackson. We, you know, we've heard from our engineer, our architect, this home is a very aesthetically pleasing home that's being proposed, it's a permitted use in, for the site, and it will fit in, in our opinion, well with the surrounding properties. Just wanted to point one other thing out, going back just briefly to the buy-sell letters. We did send the buy-sell letters out, as Mr. Schaller had indicated. No one, there are three properties adjacent to our property, so we sent them to those owner, property owners. No one came back to us indicating that they were interested in selling their property. We did receive, one of the adjacent neighbors did indicate, they sent a letter back stating that they would be interested in purchasing the property. I don't want to speak for them, but I, I did speak to them, they are in the audience today, I'm sure they're going to want to come up and comment. They, at least my conversation with them, they did indicate they would not be interested in a fair market value price, which of course, per the law, is what would be the offer made. Again, it's our position that, you know, we are requesting the variances under C1, we think this issue with the buy-sell letters is not dispositive, we think it's one of the factors to be considered under a C1 argument. We are also asserting, as Mr. Schaller indicated, we are seeking the variances under C2 in conjunction with C1, we feel that the benefits tremendously outweigh any detriment, and that there won't be any negative impact on any surrounding properties if this application were to be approved. So, with that, we, we thank the board for our time, for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to get our professionals to weigh in. Have any concerns?
I think we spent a lot of time on Ernie's letter, I don't remember mine ever coming up, but, do you guys have any comments or issues with the engineering letter?
No.
Okay. The only thing I want to point out to the board, and from, from what I understand, well, Mr. Schaller and I could get through this, I think it's an easy exercise, but there is a portion of that driveway, because of the existing grades, it's going to have to be filled about eight to 10 feet with retaining walls on both sides. The way it's currently designed is going to shed some stormwater runoff onto the adjacent lots, but I'm sure Stu, and Stu can figure out how to mitigate that, further mitigate that with a revised plan. And then, I would just also note that any design changes or plan modifications that need to be made will be made as part of resolution compliance, including review of the health department's septic system approvals.
Which gets me to my usual question on septic systems.
We're getting good at this, aren't we?
Excuse me?
We're getting pretty good at this, aren't we?
And the, and the nitrate concerns, and, and what is your thought process on this location and the need for such of that, to go down that road?
So, this is a two-and-a-half acre lot. It's a, it's a four, it's a four-bedroom home, right? It's a four-bedroom home on a two-and-a-half acre lot. I, that would, if, a conventional system, as proposed, is consistent with what we would expect to see and what we've required in the past. It does not rise to the level of a one-acre or less-sized lot, where we've considered alternative design technologies.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peters, any, anything that needs to be...
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing, thank you. Mr. Porro, anything?
No, thank you.
Mr. Miskovich, anything?
No.
Okay. What members, any further questions before I open it to the public?
Um, with all the changes going on, can we just clarify what we're actually looking at? I know there were some issues that got resolved, and I'm just a little unsure where we stand.
Mr. Peters, can you, David Sis, is there...
I couldn't, I can't.
What, what remain, what variances remain, again, based on your letter?
Utilizing our letter dated July 12th to 2021, on page two, there are two existing condition variances, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and over on page three, top of the page, there are two other pre-existing variance conditions, lot frontage and lot depth. So, as the lot stands today, for development purposes, the existing lot is undersized as it relates to lot area, lot width, lot frontage, and lot depth.
Thank you. Any further questions, board members? Nothing, nothing further, Ms. McClair?
No, thank you very much.
All right, then I'm going to close this session and open it to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard? Come on up, please.
Thank you for allowing us to be heard.
So, sir, you've raised your right hand, ma'am, are you going to testify? Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
That is correct, I do.
Can you, each of us, each of you give your full name, spell your last, and your address?
My full name is Christopher Bevins, my last name is spelled B-E-V-I-N-S, and I reside at 430 Freehold Road.
My full name is Samantha Powers, P-O-W-E-R-S, and I'm also at 430 Freehold Road.
Okay, who's going to go first?
I'll ask.
Mr. Bevins?
Yes.
Do you have a question or a comment?
I have a couple of questions. So, being that where this house is being built, we exist on, or live on, the east side of it, at the toe of the hill. So, the bottom of the hill, the elevation is 17317, the top, where the proposed structure's going, is like 190, 195, being that where we're at, looking up at the house, it's 21 feet, given the size of the house, it'd be much higher, so our privacy, you know, much buffers that could be built, we'd never really have any privacy, so they'd be looking down on us from the top of the hill. And also, given at the toe of the hill, we have our well, so anything of runoff that would go down the well, you know, runoff from their property, whatever they're using fertilizers for the grass, or whatever else would get into our drinking water. So, the other thing I had a question on was, overall, with this lot, given that it's non-conforming, and it's a 60, well, larger than 60, 700 square feet, would that non-conformity of the structure would need to seek some other special permits for that?
Well, I think your first two questions regarding the difference in leveling and the well may best be answered by the applicant's engineer.
Regarding the well, well, let's start with the drainage in it, the fact that at the elevation, moving the house 50-foot from this outdoor setback will allow us to do more grading and swales to ensure that the runoff from our property is directed down the long driveway, and we'll redesign our driveway to have the swales that Mr. Evan Hill indicated, so with the runoff from our property will be directed out towards the road and not onto the adjoining properties. And the swale, even on the, on the exhibit that we gave you tonight, we already are directing the runoff from our property, if I walk over, that was it? Oh. We already have the swales directed away from his property, even with the exhibit that's being proposed, and moving the house another 25 feet from the property to get that 50-foot, we'll be able to do that even, even greater than what's proposed.
Mr. Schaller, would you help us out a little bit? Give us, if you can, show us where Mr. Bevins' house is.
He owns lot 48, he has another flag lot just adjacent to us, almost a mirror of what our property, except that his house is further down the hill.
Mr. Chairman, I can show you a little more of his house.
If you, if you zoom into this section right here. You're doing great. We're lot 52. You can see the long, narrow, uh, flag of our lot and their lot 48. They also have a, a flag lot with approximately 50-foot frontage on the highway. But their lot was not subdivided into two additional lots, it's one, one lot. So their house is located almost adjacent to where the, the lot in front of our property.
I'm sorry, that's incorrect. Our house is actually towards the back.
Yeah, it's pushed in the rear.
Oh, it's towards the rear, okay. Right. It's a little further forward than where our house is. Our house is being proposed almost in the center of ours and their adjacent houses, that, they're on lot 48. So a very similar setup with a long skinny driveway from the, from the access from the road. It's going to be very similar to what we're proposing.
They, they have mentioned a significant difference in elevation. Does that, does that make any sense, or can you comment on that to give us better perspective on that elevation issue?
Uh, this, believe it or not, um, you know, for Ocean County, uh, Jackson actually has quite a few areas that have a lot of change in elevation and this is one of them. The property slopes approximately 40 feet from the front to the back. The high point of the area is our lot. So everything around our lot, um, is lower than us.
Is what?
Is lower. I mean, we're on the, the, almost on the apex of the area.
So you're on a little bit of a hill?
That's correct. That would be a fair. Now, I don't know if it's 20 feet, but, uh, they're, they're downhill from us. But again, well, our runoff will be directed away from their property.
So then answer that question that you had in regards to the water runoff, right? So you're going to be able to locate the house in the position that the water will be going away from?
Would that be something?
The issue that you had is that you could look down to your property.
Yeah. Given the height difference, there would be no buffer that could be created where they would be.
How long have you been in there?
Since 2018, I've been there, yes. In 2018.
2018?
Yes.
And nobody's been there, so you have an empty lot there?
Yeah, yeah. We have two adjacent lots to the other side that are pretty much empty. One is owned by, uh, the Jesus Harvest Time Ministries. And then this lot, uh, has been vacant for quite some time.
If, if I may speak to that point, um, I originally purchased the house in 2017. And the reason I purchased the house was for the privacy, because I had virtually 360 degrees of privacy. And I, I don't want to speak to the other neighbors, but I think they feel the same. We all purchased our homes for privacy. And this house being built on the hill right outside our bedroom window. So basically, there's going to be construction and then a giant 7,000, 11,000-square-foot Mediterranean villa on a hill outside my bedroom window. So you're basically destroying the value of the property and the whole reason why I bought the property. Like, I would have never ventured to purchase that property if there were an 11,000-square-foot Mediterranean villa outside my bedroom window.
Well, let me ask you a different question, Ms. Powers. When you bought the property, uh, were you aware of the fact that you had flag lots similar to yours that could be purchased by somebody else and where houses could be built?
I was not aware that those were buildable lots next to me.
Did you have a survey done on your property when you bought the property?
I believe that I did have a survey done.
And, and you had your house built, it wasn't built, you didn't buy that, you bought the property with the house on it?
Correct. The, the house is already on it.
And so, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but it would seem to me that you had to be aware that you had an adjoining property line with at least this flag lot. And you also had a property line adjoining to the other flag lot. So, so you, you had to realize, did you not, that there was a possibility that other people could buy houses near you and build?
We actually raised this question when we purchased the property. And the realtors, our advice to us was that the properties bordering us, the Jesus Harvest Time, would be unlikely to be sold, so that wouldn't be an issue for us. The properties that were already inhabited were far enough with enough of a buffer and trees between us to create the privacy. And we were not aware that this flag lot in question was a buildable lot. So at that time, we did not believe that, that a house could be built on that lot because it was not zoned properly for construction. Had we known at the time that that lot was a buildable lot, I most likely would not have purchased the home. Like I said, the whole reason I purchased the home was the privacy and the quiet and the solitude and the peacefulness. And a Mediterranean villa outside my bedroom is going to destroy all of that.
Do you have any other questions of the applicant or of our professionals? Mr. Powers, Mr. Obni's Powers or Mr. Bevins?
I just have one more. Given the fact that it was said.
Please.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize. Thank you. So given what the professionals had said, that it actually is aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood, uh, the house in question being a Mediterranean villa, ours is a small ranch. Uh, the house in front of us is a modern home of about 3,000 square feet. The house in front of that is a cabin. And the other house to the right of that is just a modern, uh, like colonial. So it does not fit in with the neighborhood and the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to be heard? Come on up, sir, ma'am.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. My name is Dean Moore. I live at 444 Freehold Road.
Okay. Spell your last name, please.
Moore, M-O-R-E.
Thank you. To the chair.
Yes, Mr. Moore, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, um, for one thing, the amount of trees that are going to be taken down to do this job between all our properties is phenomenal. The second thing is, there's a natural waterway that comes down from Casey Lane that comes off that whole hill that runs between there and goes down to the Blue Church and out to the Brook. So there's a natural waterway that runs all the way down through that property.
Is that question for your engineer?
Now, from the hill.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. He's taking a look.
I wasn't aware that there's a, uh, a stream that was on the property.
It's, it's a natural waterway that comes off the, off the hill all the way down. Now, forget, when you get to the top of that property, it's 475 feet deep to the back development. So all that water runs off of that hill and it's got to run down to the Brook that comes out the Freehold Road. And where his driveway is going to go up, that's all wet all the time. So that's a problem. That's mosquitoes, that's everything. And the other thing was, it's just the amount of trees that got to be taken down. We, we bought these properties to be in wooded property, not to be cleared out. And this property, from the base of my barn to the top of that hill, is 100 feet. This guy's building this house up in the hill, almost 75 feet up in the hill. So all that water is going to come down and it's going to go down. It's just the amount of trees in the water. That's where I see it.
Mr. Shaloner, as to, as to the concerns for the water, would you address that issue and the tree issue?
Again, as per your, your engineer, we're going to be required to have swales along the property line to ensure that our water stays.
Well, it's, it's a natural, it's a natural thing. The water that comes off that hill is phenomenal. You guys ever calibrated the amount of water that comes off that hill? In a three-inch rain? I don't think you guys ever did all them numbers. It's a lot, that's a lot of water.
But they'll have to.
Again, well, I was going to say, the fact that we're just.
It's a lot of water.
We're disturbing more than an acre. The applicant's could be required to submit stormwater caps to ensure. And because it's over 5,000 square feet in disturbance, we're also going to be required to get, uh, soil erosion approval from the Ocean County Soil Conservation Service. So if there's, um, it's going to, the stormwater is going to be reviewed not only by your professionals here at the town, but also from Ocean County soils, uh, to ensure that we're not eroding onto another people's property. We don't have any, uh, erosion out onto the road. It's all going to be, uh, reviewed by different agencies. And the applicant is required to stabilize and not discharge water onto all the adjoining properties.
Do you know the property that we're talking about? Do you know where this piece of property is? Do you know where Casey Lane is off of Freehold Road?
I did not personally walk the property.
Well, the property, my property is 1,450 feet long, it's a quarter mile. And when you go like this and you come up the road, all of a sudden it goes up this gravel pit. This was a, this, this property was mined out at one time. And it, it's 100 foot. So once he breaks into all that ground, who's to say that there ain't a water stratus that's going to come out of there and just keep right on running? You'll never shut it off. You break route mat, you know what it's like.
Anything further, Mr. Moore?
Huh?
Anything further? Do you have any further comment or question on the, of the applicant in regards to the application? You've made, we, we made your, you made your comment, we've heard you. You're worried about the waterway, you're worried about the spill off, you're worried about the runoff, you're worried about the trees. Uh, the applicant has answered your questions, I think as best as he can answer them. Is there any other question or comment that you might have in regards to the application?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Any, okay.
Thank you, ma'am, for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Deborah Hilger, H-I-L-G-E-R. I live at 448 Freehold Road.
And before you continue to speak, I apologize, can you, or someone could assist you to slightly tilt the mic?
Oh, okay.
There you go, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hilger, how can we help you? What are your comments or questions of the applicant in regards to this application?
Um, I was also concerned about, uh, the water. Um, I, I was the original owner of, um, my, my property, the 448. And then I had where Mr. Moore lives and the lot behind him, which was three flag lots. Back in, I built my house in, uh, the two houses were built, my family owned the, the property, in 1985 and 1986. That's when the, uh, we got the subdivisions approved in 85 and 86. Shortly after Cal, Calbert Industries, um, where Casey Lane is, did take that 40 acres and mine. The, the hill went, went up to where, uh, Mr. Moore's and, and where the, the applicants, um, it was up that far. They mined all that dirt, over a million dollars' worth of dirt. And, um, it did affect the drainage. There's a retention basin next to, adjacent to my property, which I'm close to Casey Lane. Uh, there's a retention basin that, that has been failing for 35 years. Um, I actually have a letter dated back in the 80s from the township that the water, that situation was supposed to be addressed from that corner, uh, up by Casey Lane, up on the corner where it, it hits Mr. Moore's property. I don't believe that was ever done. There was supposed to be some kind of swell cut through there because there is a drainage problem. When, when we have a lot of rain, you can see down Freehold Road. And even, it's dangerous in the, in the wintertime also with ice and snow because of the, that force of water coming down from, from, uh, that area. I actually took pictures back in, uh, early 90s of rats in that drainage thing. And, um, it was supposed to be, um, arranged. Unfortunately, at the same time, um, my husband was a, a teacher in here in Jackson. And, uh, he had passed away, so I kind of, you know, dropped it because I had other stuff to do, kids to raise. I'm very concerned about all the trees coming down. When I did build my house, I had to go through Soil Commission. And really, they were very stingy with what I was allowed to, um, clear because of the drainage situation. The sand, it's sandy soil, so it does, it does drain. Um, but it's a tremendous force of water.
So it's, it sounds, if I may, Ms. Hilger, that you're, you're echoing the same concerns, similar concerns as.
Right.
As Mr. Moore in regards to the, the amount of trees that have to come down, which they're going to be regulated in doing. And you're also concerned about the drainage because you've experienced other drainage issues in the area and you don't want this to aggravate that situation. You'd like to see all of the drainage cleared up.
Exactly. I mean, I'm, I'm down sort of on the bottom of the hill. And I have a very nice pool and I don't want it to turn into a swamp either. So, um, you know, that is, that is my concern.
All right. Anything else?
Certainly not to not welcome any new neighbors. It's just, the water is the, is the main concern.
Thank you.
And, you know, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Thank you for raising your right hand. And thank you for adjusting.
No worries.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Name is Nick Baughman, last name B-A-U-G-H-M-A-N. My address is 434 Freehold Road in Jackson. I don't have any questions, but I did want to raise some concerns about, uh, mainly a lot of the trees that are going to be taken down, um, the drainage. My wife and I moved in just about a year ago to 434. And, uh, we moved up here for, we moved here from Wall to kind of get some privacy and get in the woods a little bit, or originally from North Jersey. And, um, we were kind of drawn to the lot because it was very wooded and we couldn't really see any houses from where we were. And it was just a nice secluded area. Since we've moved in, there's been an incredible amount of construction just overall in Jackson, you know, across from Glories, um, at the top of Freehold Road with the ponds and everything. And then to hear that another house, you know, driveway 12 foot wide is being built going up between the properties is just, it's just kind of, uh, it's a little bit upsetting. And, um, I'm a landscape contractor, so I know like the, you know, I know the disturbance subsurface from, you know, the amount of trees that are, you know, going to be taken down during this construction. Um, the construction disturbance, you know, in our, like, little neighborhood that we're at is going to be quite a bit. Drainage is definitely a concern. I carry a certificate in water management and drainage. Um, and I'm just, you know, I, I see, I know Chris's property, you know, the amount of height difference from where his house is to the top of that slope is quite a bit. Um, and I sit at one of the lower, my house and Debbie's house, you know, we sit at kind of like the bottom, the lower section and, you know, regardless, I'd be interested to see like the, uh, the subsurface, you know, drainage system that's going to be proposed if this does move forward. Um, but I just wanted to raise a lot of concerns about those, those issues. Um, also the aesthetics. I mean, I live in a cedar cabin. Debbie's house is a little cabin. Um, Sam and Chris's place is, you know, it's a nice little ranch, like, uh, stucco with, um, you know, a terracotta roof is, just doesn't really fit the mold of the area, in my opinion. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to be heard in this application? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'm going to close the public session. All right, Ms. McClear, do you have any further comments?
Uh, yes, um, I, I would just like to reiterate to the board, I think, um, our engineer did a great job of, you know, quite frankly, alleviating concerns about the drainage as he indicated. There's going to be multiple agencies looking at this project if it gets approved, um, not only on the part of, uh, Jackson Township, but also Ocean County itself. Um, we, I think we have tremendous architectural plans, a, a great engineer with a plot plan. We're willing to do everything that has been cited in the engineering and the planning review letters. Um, and, and just the, the cherry on top are the applicants who just are ready and so excited to build their dream home. They've purchased this home, they put the time and effort into it. Um, they have as much of a right as any of the other neighbors to, to live here and enjoy their lives here in Jackson and raise their kids here. Um, and that's our, our presentation. Thank you.
Don't you think that you have to have some consideration, uh, for the neighbors, especially the ones that are right on the same property line to them and very close to them? And it seems that you are acknowledging that there is a significant elevation differential. Isn't there something that you think could be done to mitigate the impact of that elevation? So some type of landscaping? I mean, I, I don't know what it could be, but I think it's an issue that you might want to address.
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, actually, we did have the opportunity to speak to a couple of the neighbors prior to the hearing. And we did, um, just on the spot, Mr. and Mrs. Quenka said, you know, we, forget the, the variances as to the setbacks. We're getting rid of them. We're pushing the house over 50 feet to save the trees there, to provide more of a buffer. Um, so I mean, right, right there, we, we've already eliminated several.
So, so just for clarity's sake, and that quite frankly goes a little bit to maybe Ms. Russell's point about clarification. Mr. Chaloner, can you explain, besides the proof benefit that you gain by reducing the variances? We, the lawyers and the board can understand that. What do you, you started to explain this, but I think testimony is better. Can you explain from an aesthetic landscape? explain from an aesthetic landscaping visual perspective, what is gained by citing the house differently that specifically addresses at least the, the app, the public's visual concerns?
So, uh, just for the pool alone, the original proposal before I, I got Mr. Peters' review letter, uh, was a, a very large pool that was being proposed against the rear property line, um, that has a, you know, similar lot, or smaller lots on overlook, over, I think it's Overlook Lane, that we back up to. Uh, we wanted to have a bigger buffer, so we were thinking, why not just reduce the size of the pool, pull it away, so we meet the twenty-five foot separation between the edge of the pool and the property line, that will allow us to preserve those trees, that twen- that twenty-five foot strip then would be an area that, you know, we would like to have a buffer there also. Um, and then, at the same time, when we met the neighbors, uh, out in the hall, that they were the neighbors that spoke first, they were, uh, Lot Forty-eight, uh, to the, to our right, looking at it from, um, from the roadway, um, when they indicated that our house was high on the hill, that's where we were seeking the variance, I, I thought, asking for a variance for someone that was complaining that we weren't providing a buffer would not be prudent, so we're sliding the house, eliminating that variance to provide a fifty-foot separation, uh, so, again, we can do a little bit additional grading to ensure that we're not running our drainage into that area, but also it's going to preserve at least another twenty-five foot of trees that we were originally proposing to take down. So, the applicant is trying to condense it more in the center of the property to, to leave the, the buffer trees around the perimeter of the property.
Uh, Mr. Shaloner, is it possible that we could, um, I, I know, um, some of the board members brought up possibly certain plantings that would create more of a privacy buffer, can we possibly do something along those lines?
I mean, the, the proposal in front of you is a, is a grading proposal, it shows the house, it shows the variances, it, it shows the zoning requirements, it isn't the landscaping plan, you know, the, the applicant has built in his dream home, it's eleven thousand square foot house. He is going to not just build the house, he's going to landscape it, he's going to want to have the buffers also. He's going to plant evergreens and, you know, uh, you know, in Jackson, it's kind of, it's a, it's a, um, you know, deer tolerant, uh, species only, but, um, um, but he is going to replant those areas. Part of our application to soil erosion is, we're going to be replanted with certain type of vegetation to ensure that we don't have runoff problems, that we don't have erosion problems. So it is going to get re-landscaped, it'll be, the property will be heavily landscaped, and we'll put those buffer trees back in, it's just that, yes, there will be grading, there will be trees taken down to our construction, but at the end of the day, it will be a house that Jackson will be proud of.
Mr. Hill, if you would, uh, the objectors spoke of concerns of, uh, there's a lot of water, a lot of runoff. Uh, can you help with some perspective with that? I mean, it was hard, it was hard, at, at least for me, to envision, given their lo- their, their respective positions in regards to the, this, the property location, what they're talking about in terms of other retention basins, you know, is there a potential effect that this property would have on, on that runoff, et cetera? Can, can you offer some perspective on that?
Sure. Um, I would suspect as a result of the existing topography out at the site, even though it is vegetated, that during heavy rain events, yeah, there, there likely is some runoff that can be visually observed and in some wet areas on the site, but I also expect that within a few days it dissipates, and those are during super high rain events. However, the applicant, any development application like this, this applicant's going to be required to mitigate any additional stormwater runoff that results from his development.
Who requires that, Mr. Hill?
Pardon?
Who requires that? Where's that requirement?
So, it's twofold, uh, it's the state regulations for stormwater management, if they are proposing more than a quarter acre of impervious cover or, uh, one acre of disturbance, then they have to abide by the New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations, which require them, uh, to mitigate and manage any additional runoff resulting from the development. And they are, they are required to manage that to pre-development conditions, or actually percentages of pre-development conditions. So they will, it sounds, it sounds counterintuitive, but by developing the property, they will be better managing the stormwater runoff, they're, right? The second aspect of who regulates that is the County Soil Conservation District. They have requirements where the applicant will be required to demonstrate soil stability, they'll be required to demonstrate runoff, stormwater runoff, and what are quality management procedures, and they'll be required to demonstrate that their revegetation plan, whether it be lawn and/or other vegetation, uh, meets their standards. So there are, there are standards in place to mitigate all of the neighbors' concerns that I've heard tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any other questions or con- Mr. Hurley?
I'd like to have a follow-up on Mr. Hill. Question I have is, without any improvements being done to this property, that is, the house itself, the pool, things of that nature, what we have now is like a sheet flow, if it, if it rains, right? It just flows down the hill?
Uh, it's, it's over land. I mean, I'm, I'm not suggesting that there's a waterfall out there by any means, there is, what I'm suggesting here is, because of the topography, where there is a rather aggressive grade that currently exists, even though it's vegetated, I'm fairly positive that there are areas of that site, especially along the driveway, and maybe right off onto the neighbors' properties adjacent to the driveway, that I'm sure get some, get, get wet once in a while.
Well, I guess my, my question would be, if the property is improved as proposed, the drainage that's being, the extra drainage, if there is extra drainage, extra runoff, as a result of the improvements, can it be channeled down the driveway to the street?
Yes. It could also be stored underneath the driveway temporarily, there's other things that the applicant's engineer has agreed, we, we brought this comment up in our letter, I think there's, there's better ways to, once that stormwater is, is channeled in the driveway area, it can actually be conveyed and stored under the driveway to then hopefully flow out to the road, but we'll have to work those kind of details out with the engineer, even if it doesn't make it out to the road, it could certainly, I'm assuming it could certainly be infiltrated underneath the driveway.
So from a layman's perspective, with the improvement, with the, uh, development of the home and the other s- uh, pertinences, it could be better?
Yes. Well, the goal is, it, any, with any development application, it should be better, right? The, the, a developer is, is obligated to manage stormwater to percentages of pre-development levels, so, it would always be better, should always be better.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Hill, just, I, I just want to make sure, though, I think as you indicated, there's, um, the first part of the definition probably doesn't apply at all, but the second part, have, has this applicant proposed an acre or more of, of disturbance such that these conditions will in fact, um, and these protections will in fact exist?
So, I, I sus- so the answer is that information hasn't been provided, but it's been requested, alright? We, we've asked for a impervious cover calculation to be on this, on this page, and we've also asked for the area disturbance.
Alright, so let me just, so, I'm going to flip that back, I'm sure you can guess what my question is, notwithstanding the trigger, will you, whether you end up being, you know, one point one or point nine, will you comply with the regulations to, to permit our engineer to ensure these calculations?
Yeah, so, the-
You need to, sorry, story.
Yes, the, first of all, the soil erosion gets involved after five thousand-
We're not, we're not picking you up, we're not picking you up.
Uh, soil erosion will get involved after the first five thousand square feet, um, so as far as the erosion and the revegetation, that's an automatic, um, just the house alone, the house in septic, um, and the driveway, it's going to be well over the acre, so yes, we'll, we'll concede.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything further, board members? Nothing further? Nothing further, professionals?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just from a deliberation perspective, then, I just respectfully remind the board that, at least in my opinion, this is typical of the Dahlmeier case, Dahlmeier versus Lacy Township, Judge Serpantelli's seminal, I get to use that word tonight, nineteen eighty-seven case, let me just go through this, the applicant should be required to carry the burden of proof as in all the cases, this is from Cox, by the way, thirty dash one point two, as in all the cases as to both the positive and negative criteria, demonstrate that efforts were made to bring the property into conformity with the zoning ordinance by attempting to acquire adjacent property or offering to sell the non-conforming property to the adjacent owners. I just want to make specific note, based on the testimony, evidence, and representations made while the applicant indicated there had been an offer to purchase, no number was put on the record, and no one came forward indicating they would, uh, pay fair market value in any event, so that, if, if, that issue I think should be, respectfully, my opinion would be, that issue should be considered addressed by the board, uh, because of that. Third, submit detailed plans of the proposed home, which describe its appearance and prove its compliance with the building codes, attempt were applicable to demonstrate compliance with the use side yard and setback requirements and location of the house, among other homes on, on similar, uh, tracks. Um, again, just a little of my own edit, editorializing on, on that point, you heard Ms. McClear and I go back, slightly back and forth, so of course, one of the reasons that the applicant, knowing potential objectors are there, so one of the reasons they eliminated the variances in terms of how the building itself was to be constructed, was to address this particular element of Judge Serpantelli's, uh, point, you heard further testimony on that point in terms of, uh, and you can evaluate how, how you want to address it, but you heard testimony from the applicant's engineer, at least, how they further, how the property is further enhanced by the fact that they've eliminated those additional, uh, excuse me, variances. The fifth point is to attempt to demonstrate that the proposed use does not violate traditional zoning purposes such as light air and open space. The board should evaluate the testimony to determine whether it should elicit adi- additional information, make specific findings of fact based upon the record to support its conclusions, consider whether in lieu and den- in lieu of denying an application and can improve it, subject to reasonable conditions which would modify the proposal and obviate or minimize any negative impact. And fourthly, and I stress this point globally, as I do all the time in these type of applications, remember to be conscientious in its review of the facts, since outright denial may amount to confiscation, thus required, requiring condemnation by the municipality. In other words, it's what they call, technical terms, a regulatory taking. So that provides an outline for your deliberations.
Thank you for that outline, Mr. McClear.
Or thank Judge Serpantelli.
Thank Judge Serpantelli. And board members, it's, um, it's ours, ours to deliberate, um, any thoughts, deliberations on the record motion? Ms. McClear, what do you think?
Um, I feel that if the applicant was able to purchase the property, then anybody else living in Jackson or anywhere else could have equally, you know, had purchased the property, um, it was available, obviously, for sale. I have a hard time looking at this home and saying it's not aesthetically pleasing, um, it, you know, the, as far as the neighborhood, they mentioned a ranch, a colonial, a log cabin, um, a modern home, there may have been one other, but it sounds like the neighborhood is nothing but inconsistent, so I don't feel putting a Mediterranean home amongst all the other homes would, you know, disrupt that neighborhood. It's not a consistent, if, if it were all ranches and then this home, possibly, but there are all different types of homes, all different sizes, styles, and everything else, so, you know, I don't feel as far as that goes, that it would be a detriment to, um, the neighborhood. I don't feel that this couple, building this home, wants a flood in their own yard, certainly, um, I do believe that they would take every, they've said they would, they put it on the record, every, you know, possible step needed to comply with everything and probably go above and beyond, um, you know, and when you build a home, trees come down, that's just, you, when you build anything, trees have to come down, so, as far as, you know, that goes, I don't really feel that we could make that argument, that we can't cut down trees, because then we can't build anything ever again.
Thank you, Ms. McClear. Board members, anybody else, any thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Hurley?
Oh, James? In closing for me, um, back in the nineties, these flag lots were developed, subdivided, and it's an R1 zone, so, there is, it's existing homes on these flag lots now, and now it's an R3. Well, this is a board of adjustments, we make changes here, and I have no issue with granting this variance to be approved, based on the beautiful home that's going to be coming into the environment, increasing property value. The engineer has stated on the record he's going to make every effort to be sure that the water issues are not going to affect the neighbors. So I see no reason why we can't approve this application, uh, based on the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McChair. Mr. Hurley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the, the amended application of, um, the applicant here, uh, we really have no, in quotes, "new variances." The variances that are required are based on existing conditions, that is, the width of the property, the frontage of the property, the area of the property, and the depth of the property. There is testimony, which I accept, that, uh, the property was not available, uh, there was an additional property to be acquired, uh, in order to make the lot conform, there was some discussion as to whether or not a purchaser was available for the lot, but we haven't heard anything from anyone indicating or, or corroborating that, that point. I have no information whether or not someone is willing to buy, and what would be the price. The value of the lot is, is, one measure would be what the, the current purchaser is paying for it, but another purchaser may want to pay less, another purchaser may want to be, want to pay more, based on an assumption or, or a supposition that the variances will be granted and the house can be built. So as far as the positive criteria here, a board prior to ours, prior to the consistency of this board in any event, made a decision to create these fa- flag lots, and when it created the flag lot, it had to make a decision that, uh, if there were variances, uh, involved, that the, the flag lot itself serves a purpose, and a positive purpose. Now I know in zoning, zoning purposes, flag, flag lots are, uh, they're, they're not appreciated for any reason whatsoever, they don't exist, they, they should not exist as such, but they do. When I look at the negative criteria here, as far as the character of the neighborhood, the character of this neighborhood is flag lots, I mean, that's exactly what exists in the area. There's nothing that can be done relative to the various sizes, setbacks, things of that nature. I think the fact that the, the homeowner adjusted the variances that were being created by this application, um, it enhances the quality of, of the proofs that have been presented in this case. The fact that the, the pool is being relocated, the home is being relocated to, to avoid the side yard variances provides light air space for the adjoining neighbors. I understand the neighbors' problems relative to the drainage that exists, and I have to accept the, the testimony of our consulting engineer, that with good engineering techniques, the impact, the drainage, uh, impact in any negative aspect can be corrected so that the overall effect would be a positive, better than exists now. So I accept that testimony. Is the size of the property a problem? I might, I might look at this from a point of view of saying, this house is too big for this property. People talk about eleven thousand square feet, well, it's eleven thousand square feet on three levels, which comes out to maybe thirty-five hundred, my math is not great, but about thirty-five hundred per, per, per level. Um, it's not like it's eleven thousand square feet on, on, on one floor, but I understand the concerns of the neighbors because of the elevation and location, and there's- does that create a, a negative for which I should consider whether or not the variant should not be, these variances should not be granted? Who am I to say that you can't build a, a 5,000-square-foot house on this lot? If this were reversed, if, if he, if this applicant was to build a 1,000-square-foot lot in an area that was all 5,000-square-foot lots, strike that, sizes of homes. If it's a 1,000-square-foot home in an area or character of the neighborhood that was a 5,000-square-foot, uh, home, you know, I, I don't think we have the right to do that if there are no variances sought. If there were no variances sought, quite frankly, they wouldn't be here. They, they'd probably be just getting building permits. But in any event, they're here because of the flag lot. They're here because a board in Jackson Township has granted and created this flag lot, which presents the problem. I don't see any, any negative impact. Yes, I understand drainage is always problems, but drainage can be corrected, can be engineered to end up with at least a zero impact or a better impact. That being the case, I'm, I'm satisfied that there are no negative impacts. The character of the neighborhood is residential, it is resident, it is a residence proposed. The flag lots are flag lots around this entire property. That's the character of the development of this area. So, as far as the negative criteria is concerned, I see no negative, uh, aspects at all. It's owned residential, it'll be developed residential. I, I, all I can say is that, is the house too big? It's a massive house. God bless them if they want to build that kind of a house. It has an elevator in it. God bless them, I don't have an elevator, I don't want a second floor, I'm too old to climb stairs. But the point is that if that's what they want to build, who am I to say they can't build it? It's a single family, it's not intended for a home occupation, there is no business to be associated out of this home. It's a family, single-family, uh, operation. I would vote pause, I would vote yes to this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Any comments? Board members, not to have a motion?
You've got a motion to approve this application.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second it.
Go, Paul.
Ms. Frich?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Not so bad.
Mr. Fef, as usual, good to see you, however.
I, I, I'm not here to start the presentation, I'm here to talk about the date, so don't worry, I'm not, nobody should get too scared. If I, if I can just...
I think it's quiet.
No, Mr. Chairman, it's obviously the, the next application, Heisen Estates. Obviously, I, I said the meeting's over, we're not going to get reached.
Wait, excuse me, wait, we, we have, we still have business.
Uh, if I could respectfully request to come back in, in August, I know I'm here at both the meetings, I have some other applications. I, I could tell you that I'm, I'm working on some, on those applications, some technical items that I don't know if they're going to end up, you know, going forward that night. I'm here anyway, I will say that this application, this is the second time, not, I'm not blaming the board, I just, they backed up. This is the second time we've been here. It would have been the third, but we were told, hey, do you want to be last on one or be first on the next? We said, sure, we'll be first, and here we are, two meetings later, still not being reached. Again, no fault to the board, it's, it's just the way it is. So, I would ask that we can come back and, on the August 4th date, understandably, where, I don't know what the agenda looks like.
So, if I may, just looking, and this is also outwardly, so, I see a note on the August 18th meeting, August 4th is tough, where we have three right now, and it says plus four more bulks. My question is, if you know, given the fact that now, um, there's some discussion about having a total bulk day, so to speak, on September 1st, can you move those bulks on the 18th off so that this application can at least get started on the 18th?
August 18th it is. I would just ask for no further notice and we'll, we'll get a waiver of time.
So, members of the public, ladies and gentlemen, uh, application number four, Heisen Estates, preliminary, uh, final site plan 837 with lot consolidation, block 4801, lot 5, 6, 8 through 10 on Harmony Road. This matter shall be carried to the August 18, 2021 meeting. Without the requirement of further notice, the applicant has waived, uh, time.
Yes. Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, just, I know it is a large application. We have taken the opportunity, ready to have a technical review meeting with the professionals.
Yes?
Yes, we've had that already, but that's what I'm saying, we're, we're ready to proceed, and we think we hopefully can move it fairly smoothly, um, so we look forward to the 18th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
And again, just, I'll do this on the record, just not for you, Mr. Fef, just to, so please obviously speak with Dawn, make sure she does not schedule any more of those bulks on the 18th, push them to the 1st. Thank you.
With that, no other business to attend to. Good luck to each other, all in favor? Aye. Have a good night, folks.